Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, June 10th is to order. And first item of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Clark?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing. Sorry, I was going to say that before. Please be advised that Governor Deval Patrick has ordered the United States' flag of the Commonwealth to be lowered to half staff in honor of former Governor Argio Paul Siloche and for Army Specialist Mitchell Darling. And I'd like to have a moment of silence for both of them right now. Thank you very much. I'll just run us through the agenda so everybody knows what we're doing tonight. First thing we're going to, next thing we're going to do is read mail. We're going to go into input and updates from the public and then member updates. 7:15, we're scheduled to review appointments for the police, police reserve officers. There's a few town board appointments and then the Mark Advisory Board. After that, scheduled for 7:45 is department request. Library trustees requested time for a notice of vacancy. The town moderator has requested time and PMBC update, PMC will update, PMBC will update us on the middle school generator and the fire facility. 8:15, the Board of Selectmen will talk about their goals for 2014. 8:45, we're scheduled to hear from the town administrator and assistant town administrator on a few items including MIIA health benefits, police dispatch staff vacancy review, the assessing department transition plan, the highway capital improvement plan procurements, Cooper Fund gift, and approved appointment of director and elder human services. And then at 9:15, we have other business. With that, Mr. Bergman, turn it over to you for mail.
Mr. Chairman, several items in the Board's mail packet this week. One is the results of the annual election of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council meeting. And there are five elected representatives who represent the towns of the 101 community in APSC region. And I was reelected as one of the five. And I continue to serve as the chair of the 13-town magic sub-region. Next is a letter from MassDOT with the good news and bad news. Good news is that the legislature passed the $300 million for Chapter 90 money, and that's a significant increase, 50 percent up from the $200 million passed the prior year. Bad news is we're only going to get half of that in cash, at least for now, until the administration and the legislature work out their differences on what the funding source is for that 300. So we will ultimately get twice 286,000, but we'll be spending the 286 on Harvard Road construction project. Frankly, we'll spend the next allotment on the same thing. Next we have a letter that was received from the Historical Commission, which I forwarded on to staff and other, other boards, asking for consideration of property at 306 King Street as a site for a reconstructed long store. We can take that out of advisement for now. There's plenty of discussions that we need to have about what it would cost to take the remnants of the long store and reconstruct it there or anywhere, but it's on, it's on the radar screen. A number of letters that we've received regarding the Agricultural Commission. First is a letter from the Commission itself with a list of recommendations and concerns regarding the Church Meadow property, which were adopted by the Commission at their meeting on May 15. We also have a letter from Brad Mitchell, actually a couple of letters, and a letter from Katie Carruth, also regarding the Agricultural Commission and the proposed use of the Church Meadow property. As, as we get to the Board's list of proposed goals for the coming year, certainly the, you know, the disposition of that property and just how we're approaching agricultural issues in general will, will clearly be one of our, you know, goals for the coming year and how we're spending our time and effort. But these are some correspondence that we've received up till now.
Okay.
Next, we have a letter that was forwarded to us. It's from the Clean Lakes Committee. They actually forwarded on a letter from the town of Westford's Park and Rec and Cemetery Department. That's an interesting combination. But the, but announcing that Littleton residents would be able to use the Westford Town Beach on the same basis as Westford residents. And the, and the Clean Lakes Committee has been working towards that goal for another few years. They're happy to be able to share that, that news with us. Next, we had a couple of enforcement letters regarding property and distribution center circle that have occupied the time of staff, including a health agent and the building inspector. The notices have gone out from both of the departments. I don't think we've received the responses back, but we're continuing to monitor how those situations are being handled.
They have a 30-day to cease and desist. Is that right? Is that what the building inspector said? Does that mean they can keep dumping for 30 days? Or is it to keep?
Well, he's giving them 30 days in order to comply.
Which is...
Which, which means that after, that if they're not within compliance, in compliance within 30 days, then after that point, he can take further legal remedies.
So it is 30 days that they have to comply?
30 days they have to comply.
So not hearing back from them is not, it would be nice to hear back from them right now, but it's not unusual.
It, they, under the terms of his order, they have up to 30 days to come into compliance. We certainly want them to address it sooner than that, and we are in communication with the property owner.
Okay, great.
I have a question about the location of that. I went down there today. That's down the far end, around the perimeter? Okay, so it's a bunch of little piles of stuff that...
A whole bunch of piles.
Yeah.
It extends way out back.
Spread out. Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right thing.
And that was it for the letters? Okay, thank you, Keith. Next item, we'll move on to public input. Does anybody have anything they wish to share? Mr. Crystal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Rick Crystal, middle name. I'm here tonight to, to get asked for the Board's blessing. Probably not much chance I'll get it, but I, we told, I'd like to speak with, spend 15 minutes with Mr. Tom Harrington, the county attorney. And they told me that I really needed a blessing from the Board of Selectmen to be able to do that. So that is why I am, I'm here.
My first response would be to, I hate to be nosy, but I mean, it seems to be we need to know what it is. To see if it's town, because he is the town's attorney.
Understood.
He works for town, for the town.
Yep.
So I think we, in order for us to give any type of blessing on that, it would have to...
Fair enough. I can happily tell you what's on my mind. It has to do with the fact that the Board of Selectmen did in fact sign the, on the HCA. And in March and February, I had asked at that time what the code and verse was regarding the authorization. How did the Selectmen get that authority? That was my question. And they showed me that they did have the authority, but I didn't know why. So I've done a lot of research on my own. And I now have, believe it or not, a segment of information that seemed to explain that. But I'm not sure that it is total. I'm not sure that's all of it. And I would like to ask him, is this, is this it? Is this the definition? Because I'm sort of concerned about the risk to the town in future litigation agreements. And I'm just trying to make sure that I truly understand, and that we all, the whole town can understand, you know, what the law is here. So hopefully, he will just answer my questions, and we'll be done in five minutes.
Well, we had a written opinion from town council that was rendered at the time that responded specifically to that question that you asked. I don't know if in the flurry of all the activity that was occurring then, if that document is not one that you've seen, but I can forward that to you. He wrote us a five or six-page...
If you want me to use that, then fine. But, you know, I'm really concerned...
We've already paid for that.
It's very open-ended. What I think you're talking is very open-ended. And I really need to understand. So I'm really worried that the town doesn't get to rationalize some of these things. What if it was $20 million, for example? The language is so open in what I've seen. But, but Keith, I accept what you're saying. If the Board wants me to study that or read that, I will.
Well, I'm happy to provide you with that. I'm surprised that we hadn't done that already, but happy to get that as your...
All right.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to note that, yeah. I know that question came up a few times. So...
Yeah.
And the status is that we had, we took the question to town council, and it was answered.
And, and he went through point by point of each of the subject matters that were contained in that, in that HCA, indicating what the basis was for the Board of Selectmen Act thereon.
I'll be happy to receive that. Then maybe I'll visit you again and ask the same question, or I may not.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. With that, we'll go to board member updates. We're on the table. What's...
I'm glad to be here.
Alex?
Recently, you know, there was a person of note in this town who has passed, and I would like to take a moment to acknowledge her, and that's Marge Harvey. She was a longtime resident in this town, and she died recently at the age of 91. I met her early in my fire chief years, and I recognized then she was an important part of Littleton community, part of the diversity, the wonderful diversity this town has, which is part of its character. There are people who are in various ways are icons of this community. Marge was one of them. I think there's others as well. But she was proud to call Littleton home since 1951, which is longer than I've been on this earth. Her love for the Littleton community and small-town atmosphere was evident in everything she did. And I'm told that her doors were always open and her hand always outstretched. She loved life but was serious about it. She carried, cared about social justice here and beyond. She was a fan of more open and transparent government here and, here in Littleton. She played a role in ensuring it. She was a social activist, always unafraid to speak out about her beliefs in her very unique, soft-spoken, yet humorous way. Some of that was as a longtime freelance journalist for the Littleton Independent, and we will be reading some of her stories long after her passing. The Boston Globe, the Boston Herald, and even the Concord Prison Newspaper. She served on the school committee and the conservation committee. If we want to cite an example of a person who reflects community spirit, Marge fits. In that way, she will truly be missed. Thank you.
Thank you for this.
Just two quick things. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Bergman. You mentioned it real quickly, but being reelected to the town board, the APSC. It's, our town is well represented by him being there. It's, it's nice to have someone on the inside who's always knows what's going on. So I want to congratulate him.
Thank you.
Second thing is, Third Thursday is coming up. It's this season. We'll be on the common. Last time I talked to the Park and Rec, they had about 50 vendors selling things. The 300th anniversary will have some things for sale there. Also, there will be food, as far as I know. The Sun Drop will have something there. And last I knew, Ed's Weenies will be there also. So it's the first of three installments, the Third Thursday. It was very successful last year and drew large crowds. It's a way to get the media to run in a real positive manner. So I hope that everyone can drop by a week from Thursday, Third Thursday.
Okay. Thanks. Chad?
I have really nothing to share tonight.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Jim?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I have a few issues that I just want to clarify up tonight. At our April 8 meeting, Alex had made a comment in regards, and I'll quote it, "So can we explore other areas, like when a member of the Board of Selectmen, law office, or public official, about getting his friend hired as a position?" This is not the first time I've heard that from Alex. He's also made comment to me in regards to permit of some sort. So I just want to brief the Board as to what these comments were about. Back in March of 2012, a lifelong resident, along with a small businessman and a family friend as long as I've been alive, put in for the position of wire inspector, asked me to give a personal reference. I said, sure. Went up, talked to Roland Burnier, gave my personal reference. At the end, I said, listen, Roland, ultimately, it's your decision. The second thing that I believe he's talking about, because it has to do with a permit, and the only other thing I can think of, is there's a young family that I've known a lot longer than I've been on this board. And they had a zoning issue. So they called me and said, hey, do you know how this works? I said, I do not, but I can find out. So I talked to Mr. Burnier, the zoning enforcement officer, and had to understand the process. He told me the process was very helpful. I didn't agree with his order, but it wasn't Roland's fault. It's a poorly written bylaw. And again, something in our goals we can talk about. So those are the two issues I believe that Mr. McCurdy refers to all the time outside of this meeting to me. I talked to town council for a ethics and code of conduct, not a code of conduct, a conflict of interest law opinion. Explained exactly what I just told you. And he came back, checked with the Ethics Commission. There was no ethics violation, no conflict of interest violation in those two instances. And it should be noted that Roland, in both instances, in regards to the wiring inspector hired somebody else, and in regards to the zoning issue, never changed his opinion throughout the whole process. I was able to help this young family out in regards to how the process works. Roland was very helpful, met with the family. I can only say what a great job he did in meeting with the family and helping things out. So the opinion has been written by town council, cleared through the State Ethics Commission, and is on file with the town clerk, as is any opinion that he renders in regards to any type of ethics issue.
Okay. Thank you. The only two things I have, go figure, is road races. There's a Families Fighters Road Race, first annual, which is going to be next week, is to raise, help a young girl in town raise money. And the registration is open for the fifth annual Littleton Road Race. I guess, actually, one other issue, one other agenda I have. I would take a motion to move to business casual for the summer. We haven't made that, we haven't done that yet.
I'm going to...
Anybody?
I'm just turning off the air conditioner.
Seems to be a tradition that we do that. So everybody on board with that?
Sure.
All right. With that, we'll go to police appointments. Go to appointments, and the police reserve officer to first. Deputy Chief?
Good evening. Chief Kelly sent his regrets. He was called away on family urgency on the west coast, rather suddenly. So I'm here representing the department. Again, this is more of appointments to both of the reserve force. This is the tail end of the hiring process, these three individuals. First individual I'd like to talk about is Matthew Sullivan. He worked on his bachelor degree in law enforcement. He self-sponsored himself through the Municipal Police Academy in Borlston. Did quite well in the interview processes. He has the full-time academy behind him and joining our reserve force, starting out. Been out of the academy about a year. And for that, I guess I'll let you, you grill him a little bit first. Mr. Sullivan first.
A little bit up to the board.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Hi, Harry.
Good evening. I'll just allow board members go. Anybody have anything?
I don't remember you from my Harvard years, but welcome aboard. I don't really have any questions. I think your resume is very self-explanatory. Maybe you can talk about where you go from here. I mean, it's not exactly a career move to be in this position. So where would you like to be 10 years down the road?
10 years down the road, I'm, well, I'm more working on five right now, but I want to get in eventually as a full-time officer. My first step, I think, is to get some good experience on DME and work with some people that really know what they're doing. So I think taking a job as a reserve officer is a great first step. Thank opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Jim?
I see that you're a third-degree black belt.
Yeah.
No. You're going to say no?
I just have one question for you, and I'll ask off to you, Ken. It's, you know, law enforcement is a unique career, and that doesn't always fit for everybody. What drew you to the law enforcement field?
As long as I can possibly remember, I've wanted to be a police officer. And I guess it's probably because I'm not the type of person that is much like sits behind the desk. And the career is forever changing, you know, you never know what's going to happen. And you're always on your feet moving around, and there's lots to do. And it's just a good experience all the way around, I think. It gives you a good opportunity to help people with this.
Jim?
Yeah, I've asked the same question of all three. What's, what's your familiarity with the Fourth Amendment? Are you clear on the constraints of your power by the Fourth Amendment?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
I would think the same position on all three is, which I always do, I feel like a broken record sometimes. But I read through the review process. It was quite lengthy review process. This is what the Police Department and Deputy Chief are bringing before us. So I support their decision to bring before us. The one thing I am happy about is that everybody is Reserve Police Officer Academy. I believe everyone's, I don't know if everyone's Reserve, but everyone has some sort of academy behind them. So I think that's fortunate to let these young officers get out there and do the street running. So if, we'll move to next. Ken?
Brian Jones, again, Full Time Police Academy, has also worked as a reserve in Tinsborough, Hamzahos with about 160 hours of field training through them. And again, through our screening process, and present Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
I'll go with the same question. Again, thank you for applying to come here. Where do you see yourself in the future?
Working as a full-time patrolman for the town of Littleton.
Fine.
Fine.
Why?
Your answer was too short, so no, I...
A town that looks like, looks like a place I really want to be. I mean, actually, in the middle of a career change, I worked in IT for a long time, and now becoming a police officer is what I really wanted to do. And since high school and college, that's what I wanted to do. Unfortunately, I took a different route and kind of come a full circle back to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, what kind of services and roles did you fill with the Tinsborough office?
I worked patrol shifts. When a full-timer couldn't fellow ship, they would call the reserve officers. I was one of six. And we worked normal patrol shifts.
And how often would that be, a week?
Couple times, ma.
Okay.
Well, I see that you've, Minnesota Community College listed here, that you've attended courses in criminal justice. Are you intending on completing a degree through?
If I have the time, I would love to.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
It is a goal.
Perfect. Thank you.
Again, Brian, I'd ask, what, what drives you towards law enforcement?
Back when I was in high school, I used to really, I couldn't stand bullies. I used to stick up for people all the time, and it just seemed like the right direction to go in. I started that way. I wasn't mature enough at the time to do it, so I got away from it. And now, I guess what I was saying earlier, kind of come full circle in a bit of a career change, trying to get back into it. And now, I have a nine-year-old son, and the pride he has in his eyes when I put my uniform on is, it really does it for me. So...
Last one to Jennifer Parent.
Thank you.
She's a veteran through the Reserve Police Academy. She's a veteran in the United States Air Force. And she's a security analyst for TJX. And that...
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
I think we can anticipate my question a little bit. So you've come from the Air Force, and you've done a lot of things here. Where do you see yourself going in the future?
In the future, I'd like to be a full-time officer. I'd like to go back to school for criminal justice. Never went to school. I went right into the Air Force after high school. Didn't go to college. And I got, went through a few jobs, and I landed in IT security, which I'm at now. Tired of sitting behind a desk, so I got to get out of there. That's mine.
Okay. Thank you. Joe?
TJ, TJX, what kind of services do you provide?
I'm an IT security analyst. As you remember, the company was breached back in the day. So we prevent breaches through monitoring the security network.
So you're out behind the desk the whole time?
I am, yes, sir. Eight hours a day.
Jen?
Going on what you just said about being at TJX, would you feel comfortable providing your IT expertise at the police station if they needed help with...
Absolutely.
...any sort of breach of firewalls or release of personal information?
Yes, ma'am.
But it's why the candidate is here.
Again, Jennifer, what drives you towards law enforcement?
As I was younger... As I was younger, I always wanted to be a police officer. Being in the military, the structure, I was just tired of moving around all the time, so I said, why don't we try the police officer route?
I do actually have one question. Why Air Force and not Navy?
The whole story was a toss-up. The Air Force recruiter was in the office at the time.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we get to the board, I have a couple procedural things.
So the clerks do, do you always read them?
No. Okay. Alex has something before we go to the motion. Go ahead.
Now, I was just wondering, how many, we've been doing a lot of these, how many, refresh my memory a little bit about what the end goal here is for reserve officers, so on and so forth.
The end goal is to get back up to 12 reserve officers. This brings us to within one of that goal, so, you know, we're just, obviously, we're looking for the best and the brightest, and we've rejected far more than we've brought before yet. I can honestly tell you that, and, you know, the sergeants and the administrative staff and, you know, other persons in the community, we've just, you know, we're picky for all these reasons. And so, you won't see me for a while on this, so you'll see me more for dispatches here shortly, but you'll see me for this.
So where we are with the numbers between the?
We have 11 now, so I'm pretty, pretty happy with our rep, so.
Okay.
It'll be, at least next fall, before we come back to our service again.
Okay.
So, just got one question. So deputy, so we had a lot of construction happening. I saw a lot of people from Shirley, Harvard, Air, all around town. Are these folks gonna be able to?
Yes, you know, certainly, you know, some of them are already on board, have already started working. We're just waiting for the physicals and signing off and things like that, which we've got, I think, two out of the three to come in, so once that happens, they get on the list, and they've already expressed an interest in getting out there. Obviously, you know, I'd rather have our own personnel in town, our own personnel work there Thursdays, well, we always have our own personnel there Thursdays, but to get those, you know, because, again, we're running short right now with officer, you know, patrol and P M being deployed overseas in Afghanistan. That was a problem with graduation. I actually brought in box floor officers to help cover because of, you know, just because of staffing issues, so this will definitely, will help on those, you know, especially once we get them up to speed on the reserve side of working patrol shifts, things of that nature, too.
Moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Matthew Sullivan of Harvard, Brian Jones of Chelmsford, and Jennifer Parent of Leventhal. Reserve police officers with the Littleton Police Department.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Ken. As always.
Congratulations.
You walked the legs.
Congratulations. Thank you. Maybe there is some.
Not a certain.
Congratulations.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Nice shot.
All right. Let's go to town board appointments. So we have a few of the boards here. We have, I know we've got agricultural, we've got, we have Clean Lake, and then we have Conservation Commission. So, we can jump right into agricultural. We have three appointments open, and we have four applicants, so I'll read them down, the applicants down. Jamie Cruz is going back for her reappointment. Paul Robinson is going for appointment. Andrew Samarko, who is currently an alternate, is putting in for appointment, and Joanna Derry is also putting in for appointment.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Is this, is this, is the alternate position one that we, I don't recall, is that one that is retained or is going away? One of the vacants?
It goes away, according to the change that was voted in. In 11.
Keith, can you confirm?
Is there a case I couldn't remember? Yeah, there's no alternates.
There's no alternates if, if this alternate?
Is from a.
Is there one? Do you want to look into it? You want us to go to a different board while you're looking to, or you, do you know if there's no alternates?
I'm.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm reading the language of the town code here.
Okay.
Which does not have alternates.
Okay.
Would you remember how the alternates started?
Well, we amended the, we amended the bylaw at town meeting, and made, let me, I'll call it up here.
Okay, all right. Do we want to move to Clean Lake, then? I mean, that seems to be two, well, there's three people up for two. Oh, no, you're right, three. Three for reappointments, and, I mean, reappointments, I know they have the resumes here. I haven't heard anything that would change my mind to have these people taken off the committee, so we can move forward that way.
All right. Yeah, sure. Move at the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Frank Vigna, Gerald James, and Steven Sussman to a term on the Conservation Commission for.
No, Clean Lakes.
Clean Lakes Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2016.
Right. Just one appoint, there were, there were specific members, one from Mill Pond, Long Lake, and citizen at large, so you may wanna say which ones which.
Done. Frank Vigna for the Long Lake alternate, Gerald James for the citizen at large, and Steve Sussman for the Mill Pond member.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion been moved, made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Conservation Commission, we have two people up. We have Thomas Mann and Andrew Samarko, who are both going for reappointments. Two members with a term expiring June 30th, 2016. Actually, wait a minute. Andrew, is Andrew on there right now? Andrew's going for the vacant, right?
Yes, I'm associate.
He's an associate member, so he's going for the vacant, okay, but there's still two, two appointments. Okay.
Right, move at the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Andrew Samarko and Thomas Mann to a term on the Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2016.
Seconded. Motion seconded.
And those were the recommendations of the Conservation.
Correct.
Good point.
From the letters signed by Mr. Pickering.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Agriculture Commission.
Yeah, the transitional language that we adopted at the May 2012 annual town meeting said that in addition to seven members, seven full members, that the commission would also include those alternate members serving on terms, on terms, on the date the bylaw becomes effective, provided that they shall be retired when the alternate member no longer serves in that capacity or upon expiration of their term. So, that was our way of phasing out any alternates.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
With that, I'll open up to the board, or Keith, anybody who wants to speak?
No. So, there are three positions then available with four people, because we are gonna do the.
That's correct. Right. You don't have the ability to make a new appointment of it all.
Okay. Oh, let me just also point out that we have, what's that?
Isn't that a name in the packet here, Brett White? This was included in the packet as well? The submission date was the 8th of May.
Another application, was it? Okay.
Yeah.
Are they up to, are they still on for it, or they, they not make the deadline? Is that a continuing one?
You know what, I might have went to a second till you come up. His name should be on there, I'm sorry, it just didn't, he probably should have printed down two pages and not.
Oh, I see.
I didn't touch it, I apologize.
That's fine. So there are five applicants for three phases.
All right, so the other one is Brett White of Buckley Road. Also, I'd like to read a letter from Conservation Commission, enough from the Agricultural Commission. Recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for appointments and reappointments to the Commission. Voted, moved, seconded, unanimous to put forth the recommendation to have Jamie Cruz reappointed to the Agricultural Commission. Voted, moved, seconded, Andrew Samarko abstained, to put forward the recommendation to have Andrew Samarko move from the alternate position to a full-time member of the Agricultural Commission. Vote, moved, seconded, unanimous to put forth the recommendation to have Paula Cruz reappointed to the Agricultural Commission. Paula Cruz or Paul Robinson?
Cruz.
Okay. It just said Robinson, I guess, okay.
Okay. Okay. Well, you know, as we've done in the past, you know, we should absolutely hear from at least the two new members. I know we've seen these guys, but I'd like to hear if Joanne is here or Brett.
Okay. Are they here?
They're here.
Okay. Just to see what they're all about, and maybe to make a deliberation.
I'd like to hear from Andrew, too, since he's moving, kinda moving up.
Sure.
I think we, yeah, okay. So, okay, as alternate, you can have the honors.
So, right now, I'm currently an alternate member of the board. I'm looking to take the vacant, full-time seat. Do you have any questions for me, or?
How long have you been an alternate?
About three years, I'd say, quite a while. Maybe longer. Maybe, maybe more.
For a while.
Simple question, how's your attendance been? Have you been?
Oh, yeah, I'm there just about every meeting, if not all meetings.
It's gotta be three years, because that's long.
Would there be any conflict? I mean, you've just been appointed to the Conservation Commission. Would there be a conflict with the Agriculture Commission's votes, meetings, or your quota time allotment?
That's not just the only, that's not the only conflict. I think he's been managing conflicts, it seems, pretty well, because you've been on a few boards and alternates and things like that. I just like to know, what have you, you know, how much have you learned, and what do you think you can contribute now as, if you were to be appointed to a full-time member of the Commission?
Well, I've learned quite a bit from serving on the board. Of course, I can't bring the perspective of a farmer onto the board, but I can bring the perspective of the average citizen in town, so maybe that would help.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment that might be relevant here?
Well, we, maybe if we.
On the bylaw.
If we bring it to public meeting, right now, we're conducting interviews, so I just wanna talk to you.
The bylaw says you have to be a farmer. That's what I wanted to say.
Ms., Ms. Derry?
Yes.
Go ahead. If you would like to speak, please.
I'm Joanne Derry. I'm from the Board of Littleton Community Farm, and I applied for a seat on the Agricultural Commission because I thought it would be a good idea to broaden its diversity by adding a representative from the nonprofit sector, from a hunger relief mission, and an educational mission.
Okay. Anybody have questions?
Do you have any interest personally in farming? Do you have any thing that you do which is farming-wise?
Well, I have a garden, it's pretty weedy, and I, I'm a beekeeper.
A beekeeper?
Yeah, I have a master's degree in plant ecology, and I really like good food.
Very good.
How do you think your, it says here you have a master's of science in plant ecology. Can you explain that a little bit? I mean, and, and is that, is that something that just, you know, your background, is that something that you will think will apply to the ag commission, or do you think that you're just stating your background? Tell us a little about this first.
I was just stating my background, but it definitely is applicable. I mean, there's, it's applicable in terms of limiting the spread of invasive species, which I know can be a problem for farmers, different weedy plants. Wetlands, you know, farms have wetland areas that might need to be matched in a different way, and actually, that was my, my focus for my master's work, was in the wetlands.
Okay.
Would you also share a little bit more about the, the aspect of having the Agricultural Commission also include, as you said, the nonprofit piece and the hunger relief piece? And education, I think you mentioned?
As I see it now, most of the members on the Agricultural Commission are from commercial farms in town, and of course, it's really valuable to have them there, but there's no representative on the ag commission of a nonprofit farm. That's Littleton Community Farm. We've applied for our nonprofit status, and we plan to have, you know, an educational mission and a hunger relief mission as part of what we wanna do, and there's no representative really of that kind of thing, nonprofit, on the board at the current time, or on the ag commission at the current time.
Okay. Okay. And next was Brett White. Did we determine if Brett was here?
He's not present tonight, second work.
Second work, okay. Well, I'll just mention on his, let's see, Brett White, he is listed, he is a, he says he's a farmer, he says he's obviously a resident, and then he says he does work in the, in the farm community.
May I interject? He's also on the list of alternates.
Is he? Chair member?
His term expired.
But already, his term already did expire?
Correct.
A year ago?
Yes.
So, 2000?
Or two years. I don't have that. Since 2011.
Okay, 2011, all right.
Keith, do you have an answer to the question, or the comment that, about the bylaw, about the number of farmers?
Yeah, it says that not, the bylaw has amended in 2012, says that not less than four members shall be or shall have been engaged in farming as defined in Mass General Law, Chapter 128, Section 1A, or related agricultural industries. All other members shall possess experience or expertise relevant to the work of the Commission. Appointments made to the Commission should reflect the diversity and scale of agricultural business, the diverse businesses, the diversity and scale of the town's population, and serve to encourage next-generation farmers. Filling vacancies thereon, the Board of Selectmen shall invite the recommendation of the Commission and shall, in the first instance, consider any alternate members that may apply.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you know, yeah, and I appreciate everybody coming down, I appreciate everybody
taking the time definitely to stand up and speak. With any of these appointments, personally, I hesitate to go against the board. I mean, this is their board, they went through the process, and, you know, the Conservation Commission has done this many times before, and every other, every other board, commission, so that's where, that's where I stand right now.
Can I ask a question? What was your process? I mean, he just said that the agriculture commission went through the process. Can you tell us what the process was?
For putting forth recommendations of Board of Selectmen appointments.
Yes, please.
We discussed, we had copies of the applications from reappointees and new appoint, potential new appointees, and they all had an opportunity to speak, and the board went through with a vote to put forth the recommendations of Board of Selectmen. So it was, it was a, the recommendation that you have in front of you is from the board.
And with respect to, to yourself and to Paula, did you recuse yourselves from the participation in the voting and the nomination and that, or were you, did you participate in that as well?
Participated.
Do we want to go one at a time, or do we want to take all three?
I'll take all three. I mean, my opinion is to go with the alternate and the two existing members. I don't know if anybody else.
Go along with the ag commission's recommendation. Joe, Alex, Jennifer, do you have anything?
We're gonna, like, have a discussion about this, or?
If you like, well, until we have a motion. I, I'm not gonna just call for motions every time. If somebody wants to make a motion at any time, that's, that's fine, but I'm just wondering, do we wanna go one at a time? Do we wanna take all three? Are we ready?
Well, you know, an interesting thought was brought up tonight in the, in the representation of what I'll call alternate farming. I don't know that that's the appropriate word for it or not, but I'd like to, I think that's an interesting approach, because one of the greatest roles in farming right now are the small and alternative farmers, and I'd like to know what the agricultural commission, you know, how they plan to embrace what is coming along in a fairly good clip, where are the small, what I call patch farmers, and organic farmers, and, and other organizations like the one Joanne belongs to, how they are going to embrace this concept in the future, because what we have before us is a candidate who would bring that to us. So the question is, before we deliberate, I'd like to know what the ag com feels about it.
Well, my opinion on it is that that's kind of out of the scope. We're here for appointments. We're not here to hear from the Agriculture Board. They haven't had time to prepare for that question. I think if you'd like to submit the question and have them come and make a presentation and discuss it, I think that'd be more appropriate. I mean, they're kind of, you know, on the spot. I don't know if everybody's here, I see some other members in back, but, you know, we're here for appointments, so I don't know how that's relevant to.
we have before us is a candidate who would bring that to us. So, the question is, before we deliberate, I'd like to know what the ag com feels about it.
Well, my opinion on it is that that's kind of out of the scope. We're here for appointments. We're not here to hear from the Agricultural Board. They haven't had time to prepare for that question. I think if you'd like to submit the question and have them come and make a presentation and discuss it, I think that'd be more appropriate. I mean, they're kind of, you know, on the spot. I don't know if everybody's here. I see some other members in back, but, you know, we're here for appointments, so I don't know how that's relevant to speaking to this-
Well, with all due respect, because the way-
Wait, wait, please, please, Ms. Derry. I just don't know how that is relevant to the, to the people that we have up now. If, if they can speak and they can tell you their plans about every type of farmer, what they feel the future of farming is, but that still doesn't change the qualification of the residents. That's why-
We, we are considering candidates with different backgrounds, and in the process of considering that candidate is alternative farmer. And I, for one, would, if, if they have, they must have discussed this because the candidate was in front of them. I, it, it helps me decide which way I would go in my vote.
You're asking the Ag Commission a question, and there is no posted meeting for the Ag Commission. We're here to talk about reappointing individuals, not the Ag Commission, but individuals to that specific commission. So, your question was to the Ag Commission. The Ag Commission is not before us at this point, so.
I think it's a valuable question, some of them may want to have a discussion.
I don't disagree.
I just don't think this is the venue. And when we, I mean, the agenda item said, the agenda item says annual town board appointments. That's what we're here for.
Then let me rephrase the question. Was this issue discussed as part of the deliberation process of ag com?
Jimmy, you kind of laid out, like, we went and did an interview process and, or you, you talked to people, this alternative farming or any other type of, was that any part of the discussion?
Currently, the board, the board is made up of an extremely diverse group of individuals. We have folks that are actively engaged in the agriculture industry and farming professionally. Their livelihood depends on it. We also have four individuals that classify as what would be a young farmer under the age of 35. By the USDA standards, three are professional producers, and with one, Andrew, he's, um, he would be a, he's a valuable citizen, he's involved in the Conservation Commission as well. On top of that, we have one of the last dairy farmers in town on the board. We have a large beef cattle producer, specialty crop producer, hay producer. I'm sorry to see John Mitchell step down. He was a very valuable individual to the ag com. And when we talk about organic farming and, um, commercial farming, that's really terms that need to be defined by an individual. So, we, when you talk about alternative farming, I personally would say that I am a small producer, I'm a specialty crop producer, and extremely diversified. So, I'm different than somebody that would just be farming one crop. So, we have farmers that are farming here in town, outside of town. We have folks that are farming just a few acres. We have folks that are retired. So, I think the board is very diversified, and we are open to the changes of the agricultural industry. It changes every day.
Thank you.
Can I ask her a question?
Yeah, let me, Mark, can I just fish up the board?
Again, I, when, when Keith, you just went through the requirements by way of the GL and what, Chapter 128, Section 1A. You mentioned that determination of appointments would be done on experience and expertise, and, you know, while I certainly am aware of the fact that Andrew has dedicated his time to the Ag Commission, as with respect to your educational and your expertise with respect to farming, it seems as though Joanne Derry has a different level of expertise with a master's degree in something specific to plants which grow on farms. Also, I, I, I like the idea of a nonprofit hunger relief and educational person being included in your commission. I think that you could each, that there's a lot to learn and there's a lot to share, and I, I like the idea of Joanne's inclusion, certainly not your exclusion, but I, I like the idea of her being able to bring this up-and-coming, very well-organized group, Littleton Community Farm, to the Agricultural Commission.
Mark, you said, someone said-
I'm, I'll put my name on it. Mark Grabiker. I'm on Parkville Avenue. My problem with the Agricultural Commission is there really aren't as diverse as you think. Four members of the ag com are represented by two farms. So, four members, or a majority of the board, represented by two farms. You're, don't have, you might have a diversity in what they're doing, but not a diversity in the number of farms represented, right? So, I would urge you to keep that in, and I, it's hard for me to say, because I know all of the members and I'm friends with all the members, but it's really not as diverse of a board as it should be.
I think we should take this one at a time. All right.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah, ready.
I'll make a motion. Move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Jamie Cruz to the term on the Agricultural Commission expiring June 30, 2016.
Second.
Motion being made in second to appoint Jamie Cruz to the Agricultural Commission. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Congratulations.
I will move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Paula Cruz to the term expiring June 30 to the Agricultural Commission, 2016, term expiring 20, uh, June 30, 2016.
Second. And move in second to appoint Paula Cruz to the Agricultural Commission. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did you announce, or was there an abstention?
I abstain.
Okay. Abstention?
Based on Mr. Robb's comment.
Abstention, okay. All right, and it's open?
I'll make a motion to appoint Andrew Sumaco to the Agricultural Commission with a term expiring in June 30, 2016.
Second.
And move in second to appoint Andrew Sumaco to pre-determine the agricultural role, mission. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Thank you, great time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, okay.
Thank you. Come, nice.
Such a nice.
So, hey, sounds like, no. Yes, that's true. That point, that, oh, we gotta go to Matt, Mark Advisory Board. It's me, Matt.
It's a motion, of course. I'll move that the board of selectmen vote to continue the annual appointment process to June 24, 2015, for the Committee on Disabilities, Cultural Council, Historical Commission, Littleton Carmen Sewer, Littleton Carmen Sewer Feasibility Static Committee, and Open Space and Recreation Implementation Committee.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for catching that. All right. Yeah, okay, well, thank you. Well, we're gonna go to the Mark Advisory Board. This one, Keith, would you like to speak for yourself on this one?
Sure, that, this is yet another board that represent the town of Littleton on. This one actually is gonna be an important one in the future as we work with the regional transit authorities to set up shuttle service that, that serves Littleton commuter rail station and our surrounding communities. So, I'm happy to serve on this board.
Okay, so this is, this is an annual appointment that has to be made in, in every, every June?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint County Administrator Keith Gergwin to serve as the town of Littleton's designated representative on the March Advisory Board for a term of July 1, 2013, and June 30, 2014, and to so notify the Massachusetts Regional Transit Authority.
Second.
And move in second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Should we just fill this out, mail it in, please?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the chair sign one of it, send it in. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Department requests. Yeah, this one is pretty straightforward, too. So, as, as most people know, there was a resignation on the library trustees. Do we want, does anybody want to speak to this, or should we just move ahead? I know we have representatives from here, from library trustees.
Yes, we're just asking for permission to seek, open up a position for, and get this scheduled for vote.
Okay. Yeah, this is pretty standard procedure.
Yeah, this is the procedure we follow when there have been other vacancies on elected boards. You have received the notice that entitles the, the remaining members of the board, the library trustees, to sit with you in filling the vacancy, and they've agreed on the date.
There's the second step of the process. They notify us, we hold this, they-
Right, and under our, and under our procedure, we will post the vacancy for a month, and then you'll interview the applicants jointly, and the date of July 22 is proposed for that joint meeting.
Good for you.
Ready for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Subsection 11, to receive the notice thereunder, given by the remaining members of the Littleton trustees, of a vacancy on said board created by the resignation of Member Jenna Bronson, dated May 15, 2013, and effective June 14, 2013, and further, to give notice to said remaining members that the board of selectmen shall convene a joint meeting with the intent to fill the said vacancy through the May 2014 Annual Town Election by joint appointment to be made on Monday, July 22, 2013, at 7:15 PM, and further, to invite qualified registered voters, registered voters of the town of Littleton to apply for said appointment and be interviewed at said joint meeting.
Second.
And move in second, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Keith, so, can you just run down quickly what the advertisement process is for that? Does it, is the website, paper?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be putting it out in the, in the newspaper that will appear a week from Thursday. We'll post the notice on the bulletin board and at the town website tomorrow. We have the notice here. We have the letter also that the chair will send back to the, the trustees notifying them of the joint meeting date of July 22.
Great, so several avenues. Okay, great. Okay, now we have a, town moderator has requested time. Hey, Mark, sitting back. Evening, sir. How are you?
Good, good, thank you. Chairman, members of the board.
I see you more than that, twice a year, I bet.
That's right, we like to keep it, yeah.
So, it seems that we have two issues for us. Can we address both those?
Sure, sure. I, I had to correspond with Keith about getting on your agenda, to talk to you about the possible amendment to Section 18-6, the town bylaw, the method of authorizing indebtedness. As I'm sure you know, borrowing requires a two-thirds vote by state statute. Additionally, we have a bylaw requirement that any time we authorize debt, it must be done by using the ballot and checklist, and that's when everybody gets up and fans out across the auditorium. And it's, it, my mind is a cumbersome process and, and it takes, takes some time, certainly. I know that bond counsel had raised, had some concerns about the, the procedure that, that we use, that my predecessor Charlie Kay developed, by which if there's a unanimous vote, we satisfy the bylaw requirement by having one, one voter cast a ballot, a specimen ballot, that thereby satisfies the requirement. That we use the ballot and checklist, one person voted, it was unanimous. I think they, they, that was a little bit of a, you know, workaround on the bylaw, and I know that Keith and town council have put their heads together, and that there is at least one, or maybe there are two draft versions of a possible amendment to that bylaw that would satisfy bond counsel's concern. It would authorize specifically, in the case of a unanimous vote, that the requirement to use the ballot and the checklist could be dispensed with, and we could use the procedure that we have been using, you know, to, to satisfy the bylaw. But, correct, Keith?
That's right, the proposed, yeah, the proposed motion that, that you have reflects an article, the form of an article the town council has signed off on, which would, which would add to that, our bylaw language, the provision that by unanimous vote, town meeting may dispense with the requirement for the use of the ballot and checklist, and the vote to incur indebtedness may be conducted in such manner as the moderator determines. The key there is that we're only dealing with a matter where there's unanimity, and we're, we're only dealing with a, how do we handle a unanimous vote? Because right now, arguably, we've, and we've had at least one bond counsel, we had to do some convincing that the specimen ballot is in fact, meets the test of the ballot and checklist. It would be cleaner if we amended the bylaw to, to make, state clearly that we have the ability to do it, so.
So, what's Mr. Clyde gonna do with the specimen ballot at town meeting?
So, here's, you could still take the break, and you could still, I mean, if, if, you know, the 20 minutes is that important, so.
It seems to be, isn't this a two-part, though? You're asking to change the, the way of voting for the two-thirds, and then isn't the second part that says, you know, here that, as the, in a manner the moderator determines, is that two different?
No, it's only, no, it's, it's only the italicized language in the motion is the only, is the only change, that, that the bylaw as it exists now says that whenever two-thirds vote is required, that to incur indebtedness, the manner of voting shall be by ballot and checklist.
Yeah, so we're saying, just a unanimous vote?
So, that, we're not taking that out, we're leaving it there, but we're adding, modifying language, which says, provided that by unanimous vote at town meeting, they can dispense with the ballot and checklist, and the moderator can do it however.
Declare unanimous.
Right.
Okay, question now, and then this is not to begrudge anybody who is the sole voter, but we have a unanimous vote, and there's a speckling of five or six people who vote, where it's clearly a two-thirds voice vote. What happened, does this change that at all?
Well, that's, that's not unanimous vote.
Yeah.
Then we have to use the ballot and checklist, which we did at a recent town meeting.
Right.
And I think we had a vote, it was about 250 to four.
Yeah.
You know, and I'd also like the board to think about practicality of that. I know that some people do appreciate having a break in the middle of proceedings, they get to stretch their legs and use the bathroom. I don't begrudge anybody the breaks, certainly.
But, yeah.
But, you know, on the other hand, you know, when it's obviously a two-thirds vote,
Okay.
it might be more efficient if, if the moderator were empowered to declare a two-thirds vote. My only interest is running an efficient meeting, and, and I feel a little awkward being the one sort of suggesting a bylaw change, because it's not really my, my place, but I'm hoping that the board, the wisdom in, in at least making the, the change that will, will satisfy bond counsel.
Yeah, right, that's important.
That's, that's what, this, this basically says, allows us to, to use the specimen ballot route.
And it's-
Because there's been some question about whether we actually can do that under the existing bylaws.
Right, so we want to-
So, we certainly, we certainly want to answer that question so that when we're borrowing millions of dollars, it's not hung up on, you know, a specimen ballot.
Okay. So, here's my question, and it seems when you get to the ballot in this proposed language, when we get to the ballot and checklist, that, that seems to be the end. I mean, do we, what is the second half that says, and the vote to incur indebtedness may be conducted in such manner as the moderator determines. Is that necessary, because we're, I mean?
Yeah, it's, it's provided, however, that by unanimous vote, the town meeting may dispense with the requirement for the ballot and checklist.
Oh.
So, it's the, it's the whole, that whole italicized clause there, together, what it says is, it doesn't change the basic tenet that if there's, that if there's a split vote, if it's even one, then you count, you do the ballot and checklist. But if it's unanimous, then you get to-
Declare unanimous.
Declare it unanimous and have, and dispense with the ballot.
All right, so that's all necessary for this, because, all right, because that, town council wrote this, you and, you and-
He wrote it, yeah, I, I did a first draft, and he, he cleaned it up.
Okay.
So.
So, as far as the other one that you mentioned when we first started, like, you know, about the two-thirds vote, if, that seems to make sense, if you want to bring something forward on that as well?
I, I certainly can, you know, again.
I'm sorry, well, we, Keith.
Yeah, we brought one, yeah, we brought one forward when I first got here in 2007, and it went over like a lead balloon.
Right.
I asked, Steve, what's all this ballot and checklist business? Why don't you just authorize the town moderator to declare it a two-thirds? And we brought it, we brought an amendment to town meeting that year, and the voters loudly said, no, we want-
Oh, that would, that would just, town floor? Okay.
This would need to as well, it's-
This would also, this would also, we feel on safer ground here, because this actually just codifies the practice of, of the specimen ballot.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that it previously got to town meeting floor, so it's whether or not the board wants to-
We've already, I mean, we did ask, it was, it was several years ago, we could ask them again, but-
I think, I think it needs to be checked and balanced if we were to go that way. So, if we decide to go that way, you know, we'll let you know that we want, when I say go that way, bring it to town meeting floor, and we can talk about it, so.
That's fine. I, I, I think it, it might not be very well-understood that any time you think the moderator is in error, you know, all someone needs to do is raise their, raise their hand. Technically, the requirement is a seven-voter standard, and, and raise their hand and, and object to a ruling of the moderator. In my mind, if one person stands In my mind, if one person stands up and thinks I'm wrong, I'm willing to entertain that and to correct it if.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is that Section 15?
If I'm in, yeah, if I'm in error. And that would be the case of, you know, if the moderator were to declare two-thirds vote and someone thought, hey, that didn't really sound like two-thirds, then we, you know, we'd go to account.
Well, I think that's what, if Keith were to draft a language or start going down that way, I think, you know, I would want something on there on the end, you know, as part of the language, say, make it clear when you announce that you're declaring a two-third vote, if anybody disagrees, then please mention it now, give them a couple seconds. So that's, you know, kind of a check and balance, so it doesn't look like we're getting railroaded.
I don't want that discussion to obscure the fact that we're really here for the first time.
Right, right, you're right.
To pick it up so the bond counsel doesn't question any of our borrowings in the future.
And here I am, the guy who likes to stay on track, taking us down a whole other track, so.
I think it's a very important point is just, if we put the two together, we might not get even.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not sure.
We should keep them, you know, we should undertake this because we know the town has sort of told us in the past that they're not so comfortable with the others, so let's get, let's get this one taken care of, job one, and worry about the other another time.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote its intent to insert an article onto the next annual or special town meeting warrant to amend Chapter 18, Section 6 of the Town Code, quote, manner of author, sorry, manner of authorizing indebtedness, so that the section will read as follows, quote, whenever a two-thirds vote is required by law to authorize the town to incur indebtedness, the manner of voting shall be by ballot, and a checklist of the voters of the town shall be used, provided however that by unanimous vote, the town meeting may dispense with the requirement for use of the ballot and checklist, and the vote to incur indebtedness may be conducted in such a manner as the moderator determines, end quote.
Second.
Just a minute, before the motion was made, we did have a hand up. Mr. Crystal, do you have something to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and Keith refers to something that's right near and dear to my heart, it was actually May 5, 2008, the vote where this article was item of abandoning the checklist.
Article 20.
Actually, that was the first town meeting I went to in 35 years. It was the first time I ever spoke at town meeting. There were 90 people there that night, it was 10 o'clock, the second night of the town meeting, 10 o'clock, that article came to the floor, and with 90 people in the room, three people got up and spoke and opposed to it, and the vote difference was 10. It passed, it was defeated by only 10 votes. So I am really, not that I see anything to object to in what has been read here tonight, okay? I mean, but I'm really suspicious. You see, if unanimous really means there are no votes, I mean, one vote, one vote, protest, then okay, and if you're gonna then go to a checklist and ballot, I guess I can buy that. If one vote is being ordered.
No, I got 10, yeah.
If that's what that really means, is the letter, if it doesn't.
It would be zero votes.
What we're talking about tonight is if it's unanimous, which is, it just changes the procedure so that if it's declared unanimous, absolutely unanimous by definition, then we don't have to go, we don't have to file the sample ballot, because filing the sample ballot seemed like an end run. So that's more of what we're doing here, we're just cleaning some, we're not changing anything except for by the way we complete the process.
This is the way we've done it for these 35 years, because this is, as Keith said, this codifies the practice.
Right.
And even if, even if we had one, it's not, the one still gets a ballot and checklist. If it's one in opposition to the main vote, to, you know, and the rest are this way and one is that way.
I guess I can be happy with that.
So it's when it's zero.
If we bring the next one up, though, then keep trying, you know, watching them because we may be bringing.
One thing I'd like to add, just for curiosity, for humor, is that the last town meeting, there was one person that voted no.
Yep.
And that the guy was, afterwards said, I didn't understand the question. He says, I really meant to vote yes. So that's why I never would have voted. He didn't understand the question.
Well, yeah, that's your story, yeah, okay, that's a cute story, I saw what I remember because I know the gentleman too, so.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, that's hard to remember, but anyway, that's a hard number, but that's here and there. So I think we have a move, a motion, the main move is seconded to accept the, to submit an article into the bylaw, yeah. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
See you at town meeting.
November, is that what we're thinking of?
Probably, probably November, we haven't picked the date yet, but, okay.
Please November, okay.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, PMBC for the middle school generator and fire station, while you guys are setting up, I'm gonna get some water.
I'll get you, I'm going up.
I was hurrying, but quick, quick, quick.
LCTV guys.
I didn't use a different handle.
How's they get a different?
I didn't know this was, I thought it was him.
I can hear it.
Well, I can.
Can wait for you to come back.
Their end is in the way?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Is that her?
Yeah.
Is that you? Is that you?
Okay. So this is going to say to you for today.
Tell me if you want me to make a trip, I'm gonna trip down, I'm just gonna clarify and speak this.
Okay. So after Thursday?
Yeah, sure, okay.
If I do on Thursday, I'll do on Thursday.
Keith, we have a little break here, I saw the Littleton driving school trying to parallel park around your car.
Yeah, I know, that's pretty, I can't even watch sometimes.
It's small enough, you think they can't get around it?
It's funny when I'm trying to get in my car when they're doing that, that's the challenging part, yeah.
Hold me here, Joe.
I'm gonna talk about generator first.
Okay.
Gentlemen, please.
How are you?
Good. Oh, let's give a.
Will you introduce yourselves, some people at home who are watching, if you are?
They don't know who I am anymore. Joe Correll, Vice Chairman of Building Committee.
Thank you.
First thing I want to just talk about is that we've completed conversion of the generator, so the middle school is now a emergency, depending if we need it, okay?
Thank you.
And all the requirements, the fourth, the safety officer, the chief, have been met, and.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I can't hear over the.
Thank you.
I can't hear the presentation, pardon me.
Okay, all the requirements as indicated by safety officer have been met, and we have distributed to service, the school committee, and we'll do one copy to roll and will be one on the file, and we have a mark on these drawings where all the units, you know, all the outlets work now, so anybody can look at it. We also took on to put three classrooms down the right-hand side, which is along the fields, so they can be used as rooms shelters too, and we put the additional electricity down there from the generator, so the fans will go on and they'll be heated. So we should be in good shape now down there.
So can I interrupt a question? So you say you invited, you told the safety officer and you told building inspector, is anybody else, any backup, you know, the deputy chief?
School committee has one.
But I mean, in the event of emergency, you know, the deputy chief or any other safety officers, if the chief is indisposed, or what about the medical reserve corps, who will be running the shelter, do they have the information?
Everybody will have a full copy of this report, they are all part of the final result.
Okay.
Since they are the ones that will be running the shelter, they, we will have a copy of this on file so we can determine what is, what is live.
At the shelter.
And at the shelter.
Okay, good, thank you.
The school department has a copy, and they will also have a copy in their file that they have, the master file down at the high school, okay? Now, we've also finished, we're close to finishing spending all the additional funding we had, and we've been working with Steve Marks, he's given the report to morning, and if we, everything happens like it's supposed to, we've had a lot, we've paid a lot of bills already, but if everything happens like it's supposed to, we'll have $26.34 left over.
Much.
So we took care of that.
It wasn't actually additional funding, it was existing funding that was there.
Yes.
It had to be expended on the middle school, and fortunately we had some.
A need.
Need for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Next.
We're gonna give, you asked us to give you an update on where we are at the fire station, and we let the chief and Mr. Correll.
So I'll let Greg step up and give the final presentation further for this, so.
If you want to advance it, so. Press that button.
I'm like, that, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you, and this is an update of the fire station study. A couple months ago, we did a presentation, I'm not going to repeat that just by way of history, a little thing, this is what we did last time, we went through the process that the study went through, looking at the existing building in sight, putting together a space program, schematic design, and an estimate that was based on that. The strategy that we came up with from that was the removal of the two existing buildings on the site and an expansion of the existing fire headquarters, renovation of the existing building, and an addition off the back. At the time, our estimates from our office, our in-house estimates suggested total project cost of about $6.6 million. What we have tonight is we received a professional estimate, we had a AM Fogarty, who's our estimator, has been working with us for many years and has been very reliable, went through our drawings and put together, I think it's probably an 18-page itemized list, itemized estimate for the project. We received that back and the numbers were significantly higher than we had anticipated them to be. The building is over 20,000 square feet, and immediately we started looking at ways of bringing the budget back into line. So we went into a number of design modifications to try to, try to restore the budget. And I'd just like to highlight a couple of the things that we, that we did. I'll get back to this. The first thing is basically changes in the floor plan. The floor plan is the same size basically as it was, we've done, really haven't, really haven't changed the program spaces very much at all. What we did do is we lowered the back half of the building, the apparatus room, which is kind of north on the page, and that the upper half of the, of the office and support area is now approximately two feet lower than the existing building. What this did is eliminated a tremendous amount of fill and site work that we were anticipating to bring the back end of the building up, because as you know now, the site does drop off in the back, that the first floor of the fire station is actually significantly higher than the adjacent parking lot. So basically, the building is, it's still effectively one floor, it's two or three steps, which we put in, I should say, interior ramps to accomplish this, so it doesn't really affect safety or access or circulation through the building, but it does save a tremendous amount of site work. The other thing we did is we utilized, you can see the whole back end of the building here is now a manufactured steel structure. It was, half of it was a conventionally built building with a steel frame and a brick veneer and masonry back up and, you know, conventional construction, and then the apparatus room was going to be originally a Butler building or a manufactured steel building. What we've done here is we've actually, the entire addition now, we're utilizing a pre-engineered structure to provide for that, and we're realizing some tremendous cost savings in the structure and in the fit-out and in the efficiency of using, using an off-the-shelf building for it. Now, you can see we're, we're taking some liberties with it, we eroded the first floor to provide kind of a colonnade and an overhanging entry which is near a meeting room, so, and try to articulate the exterior so it gives you a more attractive, more attractive look. The third thing we did is we eliminated much of the existing exterior masonry skin. The building was pretty much entirely clad in brick, and again, it's a 20,000 square foot building, two-thirds of it was new basically, so it's, it was a, it was a concern. It was beginning very, very expensive, we had a lot of very nice stone details. What we're looking to do here is we haven't completely eliminated the masonry, but we're using a split block material, something that's attractive, some accents here and there where we can, and the building itself, the metal building that we're contemplating, is aesthetically kind of a board and batten barn-type exterior on the outside. It's made of metal, but rather than a big corrugated building, it does have some detail and some, you know, some character to it, so it's not simply a big shed. So with that, we were able to actually bring, bring the project back to the budget that we had originally started with. In fact, we're, we're about $2,000 lower than we were originally, and this is where we are. The AM Fogarty estimate that includes a 10% construction contingency is $5,280,000. The soft costs, which include temporary quarters for the fire department during construction, furnishings and equipment, technology, A&amp;E fees, and owner's project manager. That's our, that's basically our update. The only other thing I should probably mention, just so that you're aware, this is an updated site plan, you can see that the colored area at the bottom, that's the existing fire station. You can see how big this, this building is that we're adding on the outside, it's, and again, using a manufactured building, it's a big shed, so there's some tremendous cost savings we're able to realize from that, because it's just a very, very simple steel structure. The parking for, predominantly parking will be in the front where it is now, and we have space behind the site, the back of the site for additional parking, and you can see, faintly dotted, you can see where the two existing buildings are.
So just in, in the review of that, as the feasibility study wraps up, it basically, I guess, comes back to the board on whether you decide to potentially move forward, forward with the new building, or looking at the old buildings as far as do we put money into the old garage and make do, or, you know, progress with something new in, you know, in due time. We've been going through with the PMBC, just in discussing with this and keeping everybody all on the same page, as well as we've had some discussions about the existing police, the old police station, if this were to, were to progress, as far as what building would stay and go, I would defer to Joe on that.
But in particular, what you're showing on this plan, since you've got the back, the five back bays, all would, press the wrong button, those five back bays empty out across what is now where the old police station is.
Yep, the distance between that, once you pull, like if the ladder truck and the engine were to pull out of the new bays, there's about a foot between the ladder truck and the new, and the old police station, and about, I think, eight feet between the, an engine and the old police station, so it just doesn't quite allow for the turning radius to exist.
We could save on demolition costs of that building, though, by your kidding it.
Might cost a little more, yes.
All right.
Now, there was a recommendation by the, was it the, no, it was the, who made the recommendation of the police station?
We did, well, we had a structural report.
Yeah. The recommendation was that it be removed, and the building committee does not make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, we just, this is the report, it's up to you people what you want to do. But the issue is, if we wanna, we decide we're gonna move forward with this, we should take, take the police station probably down sooner than later because it costs us less now than when they stopped all the site work. We initially had put the cost in the plan originally, so, but we're just saying, I asked Greg to, to check it out, and it would be less cost to take it now than to wait and, as we start to do the construction. But we're not recommending, it's your, it's your decision, not ours, we're just giving the facts.
Is that demoing in the budget?
That one isn't, that's, there's $26,000 that we had carried to tear that building down, and there was some discussion that that may happen out of a different, from a source. And there was some discussion that that may happen out of a different funding source. Right now, it's not in there.
It's not in, okay.
It's not in there, but, that having been said, it is well within our margin of error, if you will.
Yeah, right, right.
That if it had to go back in, it wouldn't really affect you at this point.
Okay. Does anyone have questions?
I do.
Okay, Alex?
A couple of things. One, in the design that you've shown, one of the things that I really like about it is it finally gets pedestrian traffic away from fire trucks going in and out. What exists there now and what existed when the police station was there is, you know, parking and fire trucks and police cruisers going out through it, so you separated that, that's very good. My second question is, seeing that you switched to an all-pre-engineered building, have you had a chance to talk with the historical people and/or the neighbors about any of that, and whether that would be acceptable to them? Is that, that'll make a difference as we go down the road?
We have not. And we're still, the final detailing and how it's actually going to work out is something that I suspect we're going to be spending some more quality time with those people on. I can say this, that we can, we can put the detailing back in. We can treat the exterior skin as we had intended to originally, and even carry it as an alternate in the bid. But it was, it was getting up around $600,000 and $700,000 for the exercise. That's why it became an issue.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with what you're trying to do, I just want to make sure that we include the people that are going to be looking at it every day.
Alex, as you know, part of these procedures is, we did this with the police station, the middle school. We notify all the vendors, we have a meeting with them, we go over the design with them, and we take in their comments. So we've done that now in the middle school and in the police station.
All right.
That's to get their inputs.
So the former town clerk's office is not considered a historic building?
That building will stay. That building will be.
That's not being changed?
No, no.
It's going to be, it will be gutted out interior, just the interior. The exterior will remain the same, and the new addition will attach to that and go straight off the back.
Okay, so these are not the accurate pictures of how it's going to look?
It is. If you look, say, hold that photo up again.
You're saying this here?
That is the existing building.
Isn't it white-claved? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's the, the white-claved one out back is the old police station and the rear fire station.
Okay, so this is the front step here? Are you going to put in a ramp?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. So it's going to be completely ADA compliant?
Yes.
Also, there's a conference room, you can put in similar to the police station. That will have a ramp, too.
And what's the current square footage that you're working with to compare apples to apples here?
Honestly, I don't have, I don't recall the exact.
I believe it's around 8,000.
8,000 now, and we're going to.
Twenty.
Yeah, it's just on 20.
So more than doubling the square footage?
Yes.
Okay. And when you say eight, are you including the back garage where you're storing buildings as well? Oh, you're storing engines as well? Okay, so you're saying the existing front building?
Right.
But you store in the back as well, that pre-bath thing?
Yeah, currently, the apparatus doesn't meet any of the NFPA complacency, as far as distance between vehicles and, you know, between members putting their gear on and getting dressed. So with the new space, the five bays deep, they'll be double, five bays wide, double deep. So the apparatus would have the appropriate placement throughout the whole bay, and then back into the building would kind of keep the membership separated with their gear. It just, it allows more, you know, more space, safety, for safety reasons, and it makes it, would make the building compliant.
But you're currently grandfathered at this point. No one's going to come out and cite you for violations, correct? This NFPA?
Oh, as far as NFPA, correct. ADA, that's a different story.
Well, that's only been around since 1990, so.
We'd like to, I know the chief would like to invite you down, the rest of the members have been down, come on down and visit the police station.
Visit the fire station? May I bring my children, my little horse?
Absolutely.
And take you around back, and you'll see where, when they have to service the engines during the winter, they have to bring them out, because they can't raise the cab, it's silly.
Oh, we'll bring them, yeah. They're either outside, or we have to take them to the light department to do servicing. That'll be one of the other significant things with this building, having it, the steel structure will allow us, what, 16 to 20 feet in the center, where we'll actually be able to, on the ladder truck, we could lift the ladder out of the bed, tip the cab, and have the open space to do that stuff. And then back inside the buildings where the public meeting room will be, and then we'll have the appropriate office space, all on the first floor, for, you know, to conduct the regular business and file storage, take things out of the basement and out of the attic where they're currently being stuffed. And we'll just, you know, open up the whole concept and look at the future for, you know, next 30, 50-year building, basically, especially as the town grows, and as well as the membership and coverage.
All right, and one final question. Energy, Stark compliant building?
Energy, Stark, it'll be a, we're not going for a LEED certification, but we're going to be applying principles. What we wouldn't do would be, I shouldn't say this, I mean, the intent right now is to, is to apply the requirements and the performance that you would get in a LEED building without the, without the backup, if you will.
Without the huge additional cost of getting a certification in.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
I have one.
Yes.
I'll be certified, so that would be definitely something we could bring to.
It is, it's, I moved on, so let me figure.
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay.
Just one quick question. I think this money put aside for this, but during construction, where do you, and where do the apparatus actually go? I mean, do you have to find someplace in town that's going to?
We will, our intentions are to still remain on-site, probably where the existing police station is. We'll move trailers into that location, and the apparatus will be, would be outside.
Outside?
Yep, fenced in, you know, and secured with a camera, and then would also, there would obviously be staff on-site, 24/7. So to keep an eye on it, and the focus for the first portion would be to get that garage, the bays done, so that we can get apparatus back in, you know, before the weather changes.
What kind of timetable are we talking about? For the, I'm talking about just to get the apparatus back in.
It's, we'll have to look at what the start date, the end date is, but it's.
What's the duration, yeah?
The overall project will take about a year.
What about to build the apparatus, structure? How long could the equipment be outside? Is that what you're asking?
Well, it's obviously got to be minimized, probably look at three, four months. I'm starting to finish.
So it could start April, and not have to be shoveling the equipment out as you're going over runs.
That would be ideal.
Start in the spring, get it into.
Have it back in by, you know, fall, forecast too cold.
That's probably the trickiest part of the project.
All right. I got one thing.
You have a second?
Yeah, okay.
So we shouldn't lose point, or the fact that you're going to be having a housing trailer roll up July 1st, or shortly there before, because we're going 24/7, so we're going to need some living quarters there. So part of that is to eliminate the need for additional trailer for the living quarters. I think that's very important, that we're, you know, bring that comment up. Also, the funding source in regards to doing this structure, hopefully within the tax levy, to enable us to not raise any taxes, to keep it within the levy, and that, I think, is a discussion for another day, but not tonight. But it's a very important discussion. Nice job, preliminary job, chief, and I think now you've seen what the police department had to do, and get on your horse, and I think they did a fantastic job in educating the townsfolk, as far as what the needs are, why the need is there. I think we've had discussion before at this, at this meeting, or at the Board of Selectmen meeting, there's a lot of folks in town that never even knew that, you know, we didn't have folks in that fire station for 24 hours, and that after 6 o'clock, there's no one there. So that little bit of education went a long way in helping you get your 24-hour staff, I think. You know, getting out and educating folks as to the need, and why, or how to get this project moved along, too.
There will be an open house there this fall, and I'm sure we'll have several through the summer, you know, trying to promote the facility.
Very good. I have a few questions. You know, I was disappointed, I'm disappointed here the brick is going to be gone, but if that's cost prohibitive, that's the way it's going to be. But you did that to trim the budget, and I guess my question is, I think it refreshed me, where did the budget come from? And, you know, you trimmed it back to meet this budget, and I just want to know, is there anything else that can be trimmed back? I mean, what I'm looking at here, and I'm going back to some of the criticisms that was levied to the police department, I'm not saying I disagree, is that, you know, they got, you know, Taj Mahal, which is, you know, not accurate, but, you know, we want to make sure and have that image here, but I see, you know, a mezzanine, a fitness room, a catwalk, I see two conference rooms, a meeting room. It seems to be some redundancy in open space. I'm looking at that, that's the existing building, kind of, I don't know if you just have that space and you're just, look, we don't have any need for it, so let's turn it into a conference room, I don't know. But I'm just wondering, how much more can we trim out of this? Like the training tower, does that give you any type of certification? But how much more can we trim out of this and still have a functioning that meets the needs of the fire department for 50, 60, 70 years?
That, obviously, the training tower is, you know, is a nicety. We train twice a month, as well as the day staff, they train daily. And to have that on-site just gives us that extra ability to, you know, train on-site. Currently, we use homes that are in town that might be getting demolished for renovations, or Sunny Delight lets us use a house down there that they currently have, more than historical houses. And so we use those sites, but to have something actually in the building, or on the property to train in, just gives us that ability, when there's a call, to drop our stuff, hop in a truck, and leave instead of, from various points in town, to come back and make the appropriate, yes, the appropriate equipment.
Mr. Chair, I'm saying, you're probably going to say the same thing. I think Mr. Carroll had pointed out, you know, having alternates to the bid.
Yeah.
I think that your point is well-taken, that, you know, those types of necessities are, in the eyes of the fire chief, could be as an alternate in the bid as it goes out, so that we as a board, we as a town can say, yes, we do want the brick, or yes, we do want the tower, and be able to make those decisions.
And I would point out as well, you mentioned the mezzanine. The mezzanine is actually a cost-saving issue, because you're building this large volume, and we kind of slung an extra floor in there, because you've got some rooms below, it just becomes, if you will, you know, dead space, attic space, effectively, some place for storage, you know, it's very, it's economical space.
Well, it seems that all the redundancy, like I said, is in the existing building, so it seemed, you know, it seems that you have this space, that there's no set use, you don't need it for quarters, you don't need it for training, so that's.
Currently, we have stuff stored in all sorts of buildings, not just our existing building. The back garage, the old police station, and containers out back to actually have the appropriate space where we could actually hold some meetings in, like the small conference room, as you can see, and then the large public meeting room. And just within our department alone, there's 36 members now, and we're hoping to have it back up near 50. We meet several, you know, several times a month, well, weekly, and that would be over to other organizations. But as far as the facility upstairs, like the gym and stuff, we currently have one, and it's all about keeping the members fit. I'd rather have them fit and in shape and to perform, you know, the appropriate work when it's needed.
Okay. All right. Oh, I guess, no, where did the budget come from?
Originally, it came from our office. We, the budget that we presented to you, the last, the last presentation, we went through the space and did our own in-house estimate. And that's where we came up, actually, it started up higher, we'd already done some value engineering, we reduced the program, we sharpened our pencil. We came, we came to a point where it was $6.6 million. I think that the, there was some concern at the time, that there was some budget creep going on, that we had some lower numbers, and started getting higher and higher, and it was our perception that we need to be careful here, because, you know, if we showed up tonight and said, you know, here's your fire station, it's worth $8.5 million, that wouldn't have been a good thing.
Well, some people feel 6.6 is not, so, I guess what I'm trying to get down to is, it was backed into, you said, this is what the fire department needs to do the business, and then you put a cost on it.
Exactly.
It wasn't something that the town said, look, we want to spend this much money on the fire station.
That's correct.
Okay.
But once we established that, I'm sorry, but once we established that number, that kind of became our benchmark.
Yeah.
So we tried to keep that.
And now, I mean, we paid to have a professional estimator go through it.
Yep, and that's the best way to do it, because obviously you've got some good feedback on that.
By the way, the police department cost, what, $6.1?
$6.28. The budget was $6.28.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm also, thank you for the update, and I guess it's in the chief's court, right?
Actually, it's up to you guys to decide on the old PD building, but, yeah, and then in the meantime, we'll be, we'll be selling the project.
We should, for, for, in means not to count.
I'm sorry, just one more question, Ms. Sussman. So what about the temporary buildings that are going up? Would there's anybody coordinate that, to put them where, in a place that you won't have to move them and do it twice?
What the thought is right now is, the temporary building that's coming in will just be for living quarters. There's no bathroom facility, kitchen, anything like that, so that when it is time, when the renovation time does come around, that will be moved, and additional trailer will be, you know, put into place at that time, and then we will hook in the plumbing and, you know, sewer, more electricity, kitchen, showers, stuff like that. So we weren't going to even deal with any of those hookup costs or anything at this time, just for it to be moved.
Okay.
So, and when it gets there, we'll relocate things, but right now, it's to go directly behind the building, to stay on the site as much as possible.
Okay. Ms. Sussman, did you have something?
Steve Sussman, Lake Warren Drive, a question regarding Mr. Fogarty's comment that the equipment was going to be separated from the pedestrians. Now, you've got these new bays on the side, now when the trucks go out, don't they have to go through the parking lot?
With the new design, we're going to try to separate the parking lot a little bit more, have it a little closer to the building, maybe with some islands and whatnot, so it'll actually go and use the wilderness road portion, without going through the center of the parking lot.
All right, okay.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to jump on the agenda. I'd like to jump down to 6D, which is Highway Capital Improvement Plan's procurement.
Yeah, but how about, why don't we just do 6?
Yeah, if you did number 6, we're running about half an hour.
Is that what the, the board wishes? I mean, that's fine, so let's have a rip through 6, as there are people waiting.
At least 6B through N.
Okay. Well, let's see, let's see. Let's go right through 6A, right? 6A is a quick one.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's funny.
Okay.
We have the requirement under the Municipal Healthcare Act that was passed a couple of years ago to conduct an enrollment audit at least every two years. And MIA Health Benefits Trust is who we get our health insurance through. They're an arm of the Mass Municipal Association, they've got a couple of hundred municipalities that are part of MIA, and a smaller number who are part of the Health Benefits Trust. They are providing the service at no cost to have that audit conducted, and they have the capacity to do it, we don't, and it's a requirement of the law, so we would like to take advantage of their offer.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the town of Littleton's participation in the healthcare coverage enrollment audit being offered by the MIA Health Benefits Trust, and to authorize execution of the enrollment audit participation agreement.
Second. A move in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Staffing vacancy review, get to you.
To make short of it, not to make light of it, the fire department's stealing one of my dispatchers for their full-time staff, and I need to replace them. And that's the basic bottom line of the whole thing.
Otherwise, you wouldn't be here.
Otherwise, I wouldn't be here. If they weren't stealing my person, I wouldn't be here.
All right.
Sean Coffey is going over to the fire department and say, oh, he's a full-time member, and obviously, I need his position on the desk to keep it fully staffed.
Looking at the staffing vacancy review, there seems to be no other way to go about this, and it is no additional cost.
That is correct.
Bonnie, do you have anything to add?
No, in fact, if you didn't feel it, there would be an additional cost to agree on.
Yeah, okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the police chief's request, under the staffing vacancy review policy, to fill one full-time benefit dispatcher communications officer position.
Second. A move in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Let's see, let's go to 6D. Can we have you go in order?
I can, I can.
Because Jimmy's sitting here all the time. Because Jimmy's sitting here all the time waiting for it. So, okay, I was gonna sit back, all right. All right, sorry, Ken.
Six C.
Wear a green shirt, and I'll call on you fast.
Oh, come on.
I would ask that Pam Campbell, a Board of Assessor member, Fred Forn, chairman, is tied up tonight.
Okay.
He was gonna try to make it, but he's coaching his dog's basketball in two years.
And then Ken, Ken will be, will stay next to Pam for the item at the end of the...
Yeah.
For moral support.
Okay. Do you want to open, or do you want to look at?
That, I, I'll hand it off to Bonnie, but I did wanna say that we are blessed by having one of the best, well, let's say, the best assessing department, and our auditor has said year in, year out, that we have the strongest finance team as a whole that, that he's, he's seen in a, a community anywhere. And so, we're sad to think that it won't be going on forever, but actually, in the next year or so, we've got the whole, the whole assessing staff reaching the decision to retire. And we are very desirous of making sure we don't miss a beat in maintaining the excellent level of service that we've, that we've had from our assessing department. First up is the matter of how to deal with the chief assessor position. Ken has announced his retirement for October of next year, October of 2014. That's great, except we don't set the tax rate until long, about November, December, and we would very much like to continue to have Ken's services through the, at least through the approval of the, of the tax rate, which is the event that culminates all of the assessment and, and all the work that goes into Ken's office that must be approved by the state. So Bonnie has met with the Board of Assessors and worked out an arrangement with Ken, which I fully support, which would allow us to, number one, keep Ken here through the certification of the 2015 property tax rate, which would allow us to begin planning with the knowledge that there's a definitive date for, for retirement of the head of the department, so that we can be taking the steps necessary to begin to, you know, think about what the recruitment process is, and to make sure that we take the time to line up Ken's successor by the time he's, he's no longer available to us. Ken's also available to, has, has expressed his willingness to stay on beyond that, that date that we bring someone in to sort of help smooth out a transition. So that's the important first step that we want to lock in to place. There'll be a lot of other issues that we'll have to address with the remaining staff, look at how best to, to organize that office, look at whether the, the division of labor there makes the most sense for, for the future, but I really wanna commend Bonnie and Ken and the assessors for coming up with this plan, which we would like to be able to put into place so that we can move forward.
I guess I would just say that the assessors department, from my perspective, is my lone maintenance department. I don't have to worry about it, and, and from the level of importance, everything starts in the office. If we don't get the assessment correct, we don't get the fiscal impacts that we need, we don't get the revenue corrected for new growth, we don't get what we need to run the town. The last four to five years have been critical as far as the level of service that this department provides. They, they capture every bit of new growth that we have available. That's kind of helped us over the last few years with the crisis that we've been facing, without having to go back to the people for, you know, overrides, operating overrides, things of those natures. So, so that being said, we have the opportunity to be proactive rather than reactive in this circumstance. It struck us a couple of months ago, sitting around in, in a meeting, that everybody's eligible for retirement now, and if everybody left, I would be in big trouble, because I'm not an assessor. And I've worked in, in a few communities where most of the functions of the assessing office is done by consultants, at three to four times the cost that we currently pay in salary. We'd like to retain that, A, it's, it's more cost-effective, and B, it provides a better level of service to the residents. People can come in, if they have a question, they can see Ken. We have a consultant appointment, you know, you get a, it might be a week or two away, it, it's just not as convenient, and, and the people here are used to having that, so it would be a reduction in service. The fiscal impact of, of what we've proposed here today, I have reviewed, I can absorb it, it's about a $5,000 impact in this fiscal year. I've actually had reductions in my own staff, within the treasurer and the accounting office, we've made some improvements in how we provide services. It's resulted in about a $6,200 savings, so I could absorb it within my own department without having to go back for a transfer. We would look to do the same in fiscal '14 as much as we can. I'm hopeful that we can, I need to look at the part-time staffing and the new people that we're bringing on to try and do that. Worst-case scenario, if I can't, I would need to come back to town meeting, but I would diligently try not to do that, because I don't like to go back and ask for additional funding. And again, my main concern is we would secure the fact that we will be able to get Ken through the transition in hiring a, a new assessor. We'd look to start that process maybe next May with a recruitment, and bring them in August, so that we get a two-month transition period. So if there's questions, if we need to train up a really good qualified applicant to the, the level that we provide services here, we have that opportunity. It would provide for a seamless transition to the 2015 tax rate setting, which is a reminder of my part. And it would also provide the ability for the new chief assessor to participate in the hiring process for the administrative staff going forward. Again, I did, we presented this to the Board of Assessors on May 22nd, and they were supportive of the plan as outlined, so if there's any questions.
What I see here, the, when you talk about the impact in the memo here, says, going, can we replace on grade 12, step three, as of July 1, 2012? So, did you say that's a retro?
Yes.
Payment?
Yes.
So as a cash payment, no?
Yes.
And so, as of July 12, to July 2014 is basically four steps in two years. Is that what it is?
It would be a two-step adjustment.
Twice?
No, it would be retro to July 1st, 2012, we would go to a step three, and then step four this coming July, and then step five, we would just continue with the plan.
Okay.
The regular step as it is. So it's a two-step adjustment at one time. And arguably, if I hired a new assessor, he could bring them in, the same step, step three.
Okay. So I, I mean, agree with the transition, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, and that's, that's been done. Now, through the transition, is there gonna be a time where we're gonna have two chief assessors?
It would be, that would be part of the, the next operating budget cycle.
And so that's cost impact in addition to this?
It's about a two-month period that we would have two people.
All right, so that should be, but I mean, that's not listed here as a cost to the whole transition?
Not in fiscal, not in this fiscal year.
I am. I know, but I'm interested in everything, you know, I, I mean, if we gotta, if we're gonna, this, this, this plan, which is a smart plan, has reaching fiscal impacts other than just what you say here?
Yes.
Okay. So I think, I mean, we need to estimate those.
It would be, it would be an estimated $12,000 for the, for the two-month period that you have two people. As a, as a comparison, when you had no accountant here.
Yeah.
For about the same amount of time prior to your role, it was $25,000 to hire a consultant for the same period of time.
Yeah. When I, when I saw this, I must say, it was very sad to see this. Professionally, I use this office quite, quite a bit, and I'm, it's so easy to get information, and hate to see good things like this come going in. I appreciate all the things you've done.
I'm willing to say no, don't let him retire.
I know, I know.
Yes, I tried.
And then he may retire sooner.
Yeah, no, you know, yeah, no, I mean, I think some of the changes that I've seen there, just, not that I use this office, but I use assessors' office frequently, and it does seem very simple, the, the online look-up now, it's just click, 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 a couple clicks away.
And I'll tell you, one, one thing is, to learn how to set the tax rate, and to sit down with Ken, to understand how it all works, he's a great teacher.
No, are you kidding me? I go into that meeting, and I feel like I was getting bullied, there's Ken, there's Steve, there's, you know...
I appreciate you're a good teacher, you know, it, you know, it's, it's, it's very convoluted in the, in the sense that you don't deal with it a lot, and if you don't...
Oh, yeah, very patient, went through it twice.
Yeah, it's outstanding, so I appreciate that.
Every other, every other's new slant, I think you have pride to go through it, and twice with me.
Yeah.
Okay.
We encourage that.
And as a board member, it's gonna be very, very hard for the board to get Ken up.
Yeah.
He has made our, our job very easy.
Alex, did you, everything?
No, I actually ran into him. Well, get, get used to people gushing for the next year.
Yeah, there you go.
I actually ran into him, into him in the parking lot today and talked to him a little bit about his retirement, and, you know, we've been very, very fortunate to hire a great bunch of professionals, and he's one of them, and it'll be very hard to replace here.
Anything, anybody else? Okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute a separation agreement between the Town of Littleton, acting by and through its Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors, Town Administrator, and Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget, and Chief Assessor Kenneth Mildren, providing for Mr. Mildren's continued service through his retirement in October 2014, and his post-retirement service at a minimum through certification of the town's fiscal year 2015 property tax rate.
Second. A move and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
So what I understand this is, this is part of a multi-step process to get this to purchase equipment, where Jimmy comes in with it, his estimate, it goes to town meeting, and then we, the Board of Selectmen have to authorize the final procurement to execute the purchase of the, of the vehicle. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So this is all something that was decided by town meeting, this seems to be a formality, is there any discussion?
Move for motion. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to article seven of the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, to authorize procurement of one 2013 Chevy 3500 vehicle from Liberty Chevrolet in Wakefield, Mass., the amount of $58,266 minus a trade in allowance of $9,500 on existence 2004 Chevy 3500, a total delivered price of $48,766.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Three, and six D.
Don't you go anywhere about.
Except Cooper Fund gift for fuel assistance. Again, seems to be a quick one, Bonnie, do you have anything to add?
No, they, they are frequent flyers, and that they're very generous, and this is kind of re-upping the fuel assistance account for...
Yeah. And we had a vote of the council on aging earlier today to recommend that you accept this amount here.
It, will it just be for people, seniors, or could it be...
Fuel assistance for anyone, and it, I was gonna say, this is a very critical piece, because we have people who fall between the cracks. They're not quite old enough to qualify, or their income, in some cases, it's not necessarily their income, but perhaps an asset that they have that pushes them out of some of these programs.
And it's for needy Littleton residents of, of any age, and it's administered through our, our outreach worker, Tina, thank you, another round of applause, who is, is our only intake person in town, and the job was set up to do seniors, but there's a lot of non-seniors who are in need, and, and Tina's our clearinghouse for, for that.
And it is used for fuel and other assistance that might be needed, as determined by Tina, and she uses the qualifications that I outlined here.
Okay. Does any of it ever go unused and spent?
No, it gets, you know, and then it gets funded.
It just stays, yeah, it stays in the fund until it's spent down, so we got, I think the last gift was $10,000 back in 2009, so, okay.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to receive and deposit into the special gift fund established on November 2, 2009 pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a gift of $8,000 from the Henry Vincent Cooper Charitable Foundation for Energy and Other Assistance for Needy Littleton Residents.
Second. A move and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And...
Next. The culmination of our months-long, our six-month-long search process and team-building exercise is, I'm ha, I'm happy to, to bring forward for your approval the appointment of our interim Director of Elder and Human Services, Pamela Campbell, as the permanent director. The, under the terms of the memorandum of agreement between this board and the Council on Aging, we established a search committee who, who brought two qualified candidates to, to the full Council on Aging Board for their recommendation. They voted by a vote of seven, seven to one to recommend Pamela Campbell for that position, so that was my appointment, and then we got a unanimous vote ratifying that. It was sort of a two-step process. We, the search committee brings them, two candidates ask for a recommendation, then it's my appointment, subject to their approval and yours. So I appointed Pam, they approved it with, with no negative votes, and we're bringing that forward now, tonight, for your approval. And that would be the final step to, and although hardly the final step, we're continuing, we've got our, our subcommittee on COA best practices, which will be meeting between now and the next regular meeting of the Council on Aging, to continue to make progress that we've started. And under Pam's leadership, we've made some really excellent strides in the last many months, and we're looking forward to continuing that in the months and years ahead.
Okay. Anything to say? Ken?
I'm just really, really looking forward to this. It's not often that you get the opportunity to take a job after six months of trying it out. I had a great opportunity to get to know Keith Futter, Bonnie, the support that I've had from all the departments in town has been outstanding, and I know that'll make it much, much easier for me to do the job.
There, there's the two votes that you need to take here, or there's two provisions in the proposed motion. The other, the second portion has to do with what you just saw before, and that is that Pam is also a member of the elected Board of Assessors. So you've already declared the assessors as special municipal employees, the town council has prepared the form, with, with the disclosure form that Pam has filed with you, there's a, there's a form that you need to adopt, along with approving her appointment as a department head.
Anything from the public?
Council on Aging Chair.
Yeah, there you go.
We're very excited to have Pamela step into the permanent role of Director of the Council on Aging. She's been exemplary job since November 3rd. From the department, I, the clients have the, the elders staff, it's been a win-win all year round. So thank you for speaking with us through this process, and we're very happy to come to a close.
Alex, do you have something that you were, I was gonna say something.
Okay. I'm all set.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote as follows. Number one, to approve pursuant to paragraph six of the March 18, 2013 memorandum of agreement with the Council on Aging, the town administrator's appointment of Pamela Campbell as Director of Elder and Human Services, which appointment was recommended and approved by the Council on Aging on June 3, 2013, and, two, to approve an exemption pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20D, so that Pamela Campbell may serve as Director of Elder and Human Services, and as an elected member of the Board of Assessors, the members of which board were designated as special municipal employees by the Selectmen's vote of December 17, 2012.
Second. A move and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll get her on that, there you go. Great.
And then we'll get only two.
Okay. Congratulations.
Is this for the newsletter?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. We're on live TV taking still photos.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Is this for the newsletter? Thank you, okay. We're on live TV taking still photos. It's okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, hold on a week. Okay, let's move to preliminary goal-setting exercise. As we know, we've all submitted our goals for 2014 and we will schedule a public hearing on those goals. Keith has prepared a very detailed but organized matrix here. If you look in the left two columns, those are the, the goals from previous years and then the, they're all categorized and then you can see new goals that are similar or related that are from the 2014 potential goals. So I think this is a pretty good way to sort these because you can see the ones that cross over and fall under similar headings, so.
What I tried to do in that third column from the left that's, that's all printed in bold, what I first was to carry forward any of the goals that you had from the previous year unless it was clearly accomplished. And then to use that as the sorting mechanism for the individual comments that I got from the, the individual members. And I apologize if, if I've taken your proposed goal and put it in the wrong box. But it's, it's a close approximation, but what might be helpful in going through the list is if you, if you concentrated on that third column from the left that's in bold that if, if, and, and sort of try to reach a consensus on whether you want the thing in as a goal or not. And if you do, then whether the, you know, whether the way it's framed in there captures all that you think you needed to, to be able to move forward. It's a two-step process, tonight's the preliminary goal-setting and then you have a public hearing. The idea though would be that we would actually publish the list, so essentially whatever in the third column, we'd put in a public hearing notice between now and, and the, and the public hearing so that the public has something to react to.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion here? Just because it's, it's almost overwhelming to look at some of the list and I don't know how the rest of the board members feel. If we can at least take this list and each member possibly come up with, because, you know, if each of us come up with, let's say, three, that's 15 goals. Right now there's, that's, I was going to say 60 or 70 or 80 or 90 goals. If we can make a decision based on what other members, I mean, we may see a goal that another member proposed and prioritize in those categories and maybe schedule another time to kind of whittle this down based on what members feel are their top three priorities in these separate categories? Because there's a whole boatload here and we'll be here till 2:00 AM.
And it's taken us several meetings sometimes to even do the preliminary exercise. Last year, the hearing was held in July.
Yeah, we were actually pretty good last year.
Yeah, we were, we did it sooner last year than we.
I wouldn't have a problem going to one more meeting if we wanted to trim this down. I don't even have that many goals, I don't, you know, that we need to trim down, but I can see the point. I think there's also some that have either been done before or duplicates, so, I don't know, what's the board's pleasure?
I know we are, one of the things that I had hoped, and it never works that way, but by placing this item at an earlier point in the evening, I was hoping that we would get to it when we're all alert.
Right.
Yeah.
And that would, what, what might be well is if we could agree that we want to have an early start time and we don't have anything scheduled for, let's say, if you wanted, if you wanted to say, to do this exercise from, you know, 7:30 to 8:15 or something, or 8:30 at your next meeting. And then we'll just, I don't think we have, right, at this point, we don't have a lot of other business for the, for the.
Twenty-fourth.
For the 24th. We've got some award appointments to be made that we talked about tonight, we could do those before, but then if, if we were to agree that the bulk of what your meeting's going to be is this, then we can, you know, maybe put off some other items to a future meeting, but it isn't, I think it's very important to be able to spend the quality time going through this, but you want to be sure that you're, you know, you're ready to.
I think there's, there's a lot of commonalities in here. I mean, they're worded differently, but if you go through and look at this stuff, there's quite a bit of agreement. And so I think part of what the exercise is going to do is, you know, what that end, how that end agreement is worded in the goal. You know, we, we, a couple of things just speeding through that, that just stand right out is something we pretty much all go on with. And I don't know that it, that we can reduce it to three goals. I think we have been opportunistic in the past and we've had some general directions of things that were, last year it was the primary goals versus the secondary goals if the opportunity presented itself and I think we do very well in that situation. So I don't, I don't want to see us limited to a list of three or a list of four, but rather a prioritized list.
Good.
And I would like to ask a question as a new member sitting at this table. With respect to, as you were saying, sort of prioritizing things, are we going to be assigning tasks? Meaning, for instance, one of the things that I suggested was work with Mass Highway to put a left-hand turn signal. Would that task be assigned to me?
No.
No.
Typically they get assigned to a staff member. Some of them, for instance, some of your other ones, you know, the encourage walk mile day, that might be something that you work with, you know, parking.
That one definitely.
Something like that, but, or.
If we don't have staff that.
You know, cleanup, you know, Joe says cleanup depot, I think that was on there from last year, so I don't know, maybe he'll do something to, you know, kickstart that one again. But most of the time, a lot of these like, I don't know, most of them get assigned to staff.
Yeah, I mean, they're the goals for the organization, so that, those are the things that we would all be doing and then reporting back to you on, on how it's done. And for, for some of them though, if it's a, if it's a particular thing that, that, and we've had this discussion before, where, where selectmen, individual selectmen have a particular interest in, in a project or it might be assigned to a subcommittee that the, the board sets up, then, then, you know, you might be able to do it. But most of the work is done by the board as a whole. Let's say on, on the updating of the roadway improvement plan, that's something that the board as a whole wanted to be able to weigh in on and.
I just wanted to, quickly, you mentioned the depot, how you pull that out. On a very positive note, there's a group of local citizens in that area that were going to go down on SADU but the rain held them off.
Okay.
They should be going down this SADU to start the cleanup on, on their own, so I ask after the residents that are down there, try to clean a portion of that up going up against the.
I guess the ironworks.
The ironworks, yeah. And, and also take care of the, the gatekeepers.
Yeah.
So it looks good for the, for the anniversary, hopefully it'll look good for years that comes.
Okay. So what's the board's will? Do you want one more to walk through these or do we want to go right to a public hearing?
Well, and it might make sense to include Mr. Carr's in the matrix here.
Yeah, definitely, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, yeah, I made.
I'm sure we'll leave that tomorrow.
I made the entry by hand, but I'll make them.
Okay.
I'll make stuff tomorrow.
I'll redo that tomorrow, yeah.
Because we're tabling this?
No, we're not tabling, well, no, there's two, there's two steps. We go to a public hearing to actually adopt them, but.
Well, I think what you want to do, I think.
But usually there's discussion first.
Yeah, I think you need to have a, a discussion first and then go to the public hearing.
So tonight we would have discussed, gone through each one of these and thought everyone could have weighed in on them, but.
I like the idea of starting the meeting earlier for.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Well, we'd start, putting, no, just putting this earlier on the agenda.
We've done, we've done somewhere, it's been primarily the agenda item. You know, over the, over the years have been occasions where, you know, that was the primary agenda item, we did a couple of other things, but the whole meeting was, really revolved around this discussion and understanding each other about each of the points that we're trying to make. I mean, that's how we're going to come to the commonalities, is if everybody gets to talk about, well, this is why I have that in there, then somebody says, oh, well, that's pretty close to what I want, so then, then you agree and then we just, you know, shorten the process.
Any thought of, did you want to have an earlier start time or did you want to just say at seven, then maybe to say from seven to eight?
Or seven, whatever, 7:15, we got the, you know, we got the red mail, the public input, number updates, things like that, so go at 7:15, right?
You could and we could, we could redo the, those few town board appointments for, after this item.
Oh, because we had that set at.
We just need to tell people when to come in and we typically have been doing that earlier, but it can, you know, it can sort of drag on.
Well, we can start at 6:30 as Mr. Nark said, knock off as much as we can before the, you know, hour gets us into 6:30, 7:30, 8:00.
Personally, I have a hard, I have a hard time making it by 7:00.
Okay.
Personally, I mean.
It's got to be business casual though, so you don't have to get dressed up. I'll save you time.
You watch, you watch when I come in then. Is this casual now or?
My car hurts, my T-shirt, yeah.
But I'm not sure, I'm not sure an hour is going to be an adequate discussion.
It doesn't mean we have to get it done in one meeting either. In the past, we've done it in two or three meetings. I mean, before we go to public hearing, there's no reason why we can't spend an hour or so on it, get it to the next meeting. I mean, yeah, they're, it's good to have it done by at least the end of July, but, you know.
Do we ever have extra meetings to address specifically?
Yes, but not this.
Not this?
We have, no, I, I, I think it would be though, if, if, one way to make sure that we spend the quality time needed on this would essentially be to say that we'll only put on the agenda for, for the next meeting, those things that can't wait. And we've got, it's a short, and it's a short list, we're hoping to bring you the fire union contract for ratification for changes that we've made to implement staffing and.
Are the appointments, those, those going to be quick? I mean, tonight was a little longer.
Yeah, we could, I think we could push the appointments off till, till the 8th of July.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so if we did, if we made those changes, then you can spend quality time, which needs to be spent on, on this and you could do that at, you know, by 7:30 at, at the latest at your next meeting, on the 24th.
Now, in, in the process, there's one piece I have in this that would, would probably show itself beforehand and I, one of my goals is to reinstate the all-boards meeting and I think that's an important meeting to have as you establish your goals. So.
Is that a?
We'll admit to here, that, it's in my list, yeah. Something we've done off and on over the years where you have an all-boards meeting and, and I find it pretty enlightening sometimes.
I thought last time was a failure, colossal failure, I'd like it.
No, I think that was the committee.
Oh, the committee.
The board of, well, the board of, the board of chairs.
The chairs, the chairs.
Yeah, the all, the all, the all, the all-boards meeting warped into the board of chairs, which nobody liked, so.
Too many chefs in that kitchen.
It was all captains and no mates.
So Alex, you're saying that's going to come up before we get to this?
Well, we can go through a first one, maybe have that as a second.
No, you said, you said you want.
I think, I think it's a valuable exercise in, in establishing our goals and also getting, you know, having a good level of communication so that, so that we have a better understanding while we're doing our goals.
So are you saying you want to get all the boards together to discuss selection goals? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think, I think we'd have to go back and look at the format that we did before, but I think each board was given a few minutes to talk about what was, what was on their plate and what was important to them and work their way around. Because it's, it's, you have to cover a lot of people in a very short period of time, so it's a pretty structured format that has to occur.
Could we, could we do it by email and have it ready for the next?
Well, I don't know. I think if boards have some, I mean, there are always.
I gotta say, I invited all the staff to submit comments and we discussed it at the staff meeting and there weren't a lot of, everyone's happy to do whatever you tell us, so.
But I mean, as far as all the other.
Believe it or not.
As far as all the other boards, if they have a priority, they're always welcome to come in here, whereas right now we're establishing selectmen's.
No, the closest that we got to the all-boards meeting, although it was spread out over the day, was that Saturday in December when, when we all went to the finance committee meeting and spent the day there and then each board came in or, or each department came in during the day.
I don't know if that, I don't know if that parade's going to be reconstructed any kind of.
Well, next December, but. But that, I thought that format worked great though for, in terms of just getting through, from my perspective anyway, instead of sitting through, you know, a dozen FinCom meetings in one sitting, we got really a lot of quality information across and heard what was important to those other departments and boards.
Okay, so which one we can agree to, agenda it again and come back with?
One time, that's it, one time. One more discussion and then we'll, they adopt, because usually this is what gets pushed off and off and off. So at the next meeting, so.
You just said one more discussion, we haven't had any discussion yet, so it means only discussion.
One more meeting, one more discussion.
So you're going to, you're going to reschedule the preliminary exercise for the, the meeting on Monday, June 24th?
Right, and what else do we have? Do we still want to do appointments that day?
Well, I would suggest that we, in so doing, that we move the appointments to July 8th. So the vote you took earlier, which said June 24th, we'll instead read July 8th with your approval. Then we'll, then we'll schedule those board members to come in.
Okay.
Two weeks later.
Alright, and then what was the other one you need to, but the fire?
We now, if we have any union contracts, we're going to bring them forward.
Those are pretty quick though.
It, it would be, yeah, we're working hard and, and we'll hope to get it done and, and want to get your vote.
Okay, live for us. Alright, any board members?
Are we, at the preliminary one, are we going to take public input or input from department heads and stuff?
That would be the public hearing.
That would happen at the subsequent public hearing.
Correct, the public hearing, yeah. We got to lay out ours, we have to lay out, we have to give them something, we have to give people something to comment on. And I think if we, if we have a public hearing scheduled for July 8th, I don't know if it's worthwhile to take public input before we have anything set to, put before the public. I mean, this isn't something before the public, this is a working, this is a working partner.
Okay, well, I don't quite see it the same way, but that's fine.
And do you have something to add to the Board of Selectmen's goal-setting process there, Mr. Tarbox?
Well, I haven't waited 70 or so minutes for the agenda discussion. I'm kind of bummed that I took time out of my evening to come here and just decide to not discuss. So I think I have a meta-comment that, that it would be, citizens might be more willing to come out and hear the discussion if we had some confidence that after waiting an hour for you to handle the items that you then, you know, I don't know, handled it.
Well, I can appreciate that, things don't always go as seem. I mean, you know, we had plenty of comments on some of those board appointments and I'm sure being a board member for very many years yourself, I'm sure the FinCom doesn't always work like, like down to the minute on the, on the, on their agenda. So, I mean, we apologize for the inconvenience, that's the way things go. I don't think anyone else has comments on that. I mean, we do our best, some stuff goes over, we have, you know.
I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind making.
I'm speaking, Mr. Tarbox, but we have, you know, I mean, I chose to shift the agenda a little bit, we have dedicated employees, some who have to be at the job at 6:00 AM and I chose to take some of them first and, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. So if you have any more, go ahead, go ahead.
Sir, I apologize. I, I'm, I'm cool with it being late, it's, I'm less cool with it being late and then not happening, just for the record.
Yeah, well, I don't think any of us are happy about it, I mean, but.
Ready for the consent agenda?
Oh, do we have, do we have the motion on this right now?
Well, if you would, the record will indicate that you've rescheduled this exercise for Monday, June 24th and that those town board appointments will be on, on July 8th.
Mr. Clancy?
Yeah, just, just wanted to ask, on the 24th, is public comment or input going to be permitted or is that only going to be printed on the 8th?
For the purpose of planning purposes, why don't we do this then? Well, you're guaranteed that public input will be taken at the public hearing, that's the purpose of it. So why don't we say that, that, so that we don't have people showing up twice and walking away disappointed again? Why don't we say that, that that will be the time for public input and that we won't take it at the next one, that, that way nothing happens? Does that, does that make sense to you, Mr. Clancy? I mean, that we, that we take all the public at once?
It does make great sense except, I'm on vacation, I'll be right. I was hoping, I came here tonight as did Mr. Tarbox, hoping to participate to whatever extent allowed.
Well, we always take written testimony. We always take written testimony, so I mean, for any, anyone who wants to send us a letter about anything.
And I believe we've, I believe we've corresponded before.
Yeah, and we'll include, we'll make sure that that's in our packets.
May I make a comment with respect to we can take public information? It's hard for Mr. Clancy and Mr. Tarbox and the other people who I saw walk out, 45 It's hard for Mr. Clancy and Mr. Tarbox and the other people who I saw walk out forty-five minutes ago to comment in a vacuum if they knew that there was a particular thing on this document which they were interested in commenting on and they can't be in town. Mr. Clancy could write and say, oh yeah, this one here is one I feel strongly about and I don't want to see it excised from the working document so that it never makes it to the public hearing.
Well, June twenty-fourth, they'll all be published after June twenty-fourth, right? They'll be published on the website.
Right, well. Those, those which you adopt preliminarily as your goals will appear in the notice. Those that you don't.
In the notice, yeah, yeah.
Because right now, all we have is an internal document that is, I mean, you haven't set goals. You set goals for last year. That's a matter of public record that, and that document exists. There is no document. I mean, there's a, there's this thing that I've generated which tries to pull together the goals that you, that we set last year and the proposed goals that individual members have come up with for next year. You know, because I don't, I don't know that that, that draft lists in, in your document constitutes what your goals are.
Right, yeah.
I think they constitute what I.
Interpret.
What I interpret.
Put together from.
But I don't think it stands on its own.
Okay. Mr. Small.
Thank you. Given that some folks won't be available on the eighth or some on the twenty-fourth, the goals are so important, can public input be accepted both times?
There's nothing to be accepted. There's nothing, but we don't even have a document on the twenty-fourth. We don't even have any, we don't have the goals set. We, the goals aren't, are going to be set on the twenty-fourth. We don't have anything to comment on. You want to comment on a draft?
Sure.
A lot, so what, you know, wait, 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 what if we have something? So what if we take, you know, take comments for twenty minutes on something and then it doesn't even make it to the, to the, you know, it doesn't make it to the final.
Well, as you said, selectmen just said, sometimes democracy can be messy. It would be bad.
Did I say that? When did I say that?
You know, that it doesn't.
When did I say that?
Around the agenda.
When did I say that?
Okay, hold on a second.
No, 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 sorry. Mr. Small, when did I say that?
All right. My point is.
Mr. Small, no, I'm asking you a question that please answer. You just accused me of saying something. When did I say that?
You said it in so many words this evening. It can't always happen according to an agenda. Things get moved around. All that is the case.
That's not, that's not the tone of what I said. I think you're putting words in my mouth.
Okay.
I look for a motion, please.
All right, I'm making a motion. Well, we, we need to move on.
Thank you for your courtesy.
We need to, we need to move on.
Can I just, I feel like I was not listened to.
All right, go ahead. You have some?
My concern is that there is a laundry list here and I, I contributed quite a bit, okay? My concern is that there will not be an opportunity for people to comment on, you know, the put-in walkway from town center to the point, okay? No one can comment on that if during the June twenty-fourth exercise, this gets excised. What if there is a gathering of people who really, really want to see this, but we excise it before they have an opportunity to comment on it?
If it's your goal and you really want it, you fight and put it in. We'll follow.
It's not a goal yet.
Yeah, it's not a goal until, yeah.
I, I agree with her. I think there's, there's some stuff where, some of the stuff is brought to us by people who are like a champion for their particular cause and I'd love it if they speak up and say, this is why we think that's important. And there's no better advocate than the public for advocacy. And, and so I don't think we should, I'm not saying that the intent is to take public input, but I, but if somebody has a comment to offer in the process of us deliberating what might be best, that would help us in any way, I'm all for taking it.
So if you're the champion of the goal, someone gives you a goal and makes you the champion for it, I mean, that's your job. I mean, if you tell us, look, I really want to put this as a goal, no one's going to object to it. We don't, I don't, I mean, this is selecting goals.
I'm the champion for public input.
Okay, so put that in as a goal though. But that's, but that's what you, we're talking goals here. We're not talking sarcasm.
I'm putting that into the session now. That's why I think we should always take the opportunity when somebody feels that they can enlighten us as a board about a particular subject to make them feel that they will be heard.
But that's.
And these are public meetings and that's why I think there should be a segment in there where if somebody wants to comment, they may.
They may, on the, when we hold a public hearing. That's why we're holding a public hearing.
I think one of the things, how would you organize it? Because my big fear is, is isn't taking input from the public, that's great. My fear is we start at seven o'clock in this, we could be going till eleven o'clock unless we have some kind of organization on, on how to, how to take the, I mean, technically those through every single list, we're going to have forty-eight things to allow people to comment on. I, I, it's, I don't know how to do it, I guess, because we've, we've done it in the past. I can just see this, you know, expanding to a four-hour thing.
Twice. Because all the same questions will come up at the public hearing because they're not really a matter of public record until they're on for the public hearing.
I don't agree with you. I don't think that it necessarily comes up twice. And, and look, look at the way this board postures as it is now. When somebody raises their hand, the chair recognizes them and that's a process of deliberating through anything we're doing. Why should this be any different?
Because there's selecting goals. We're put here for a reason. We're going to present the goals and then they're going to have a chance to talk, to talk about them. Until we have a, a set of goals that are formalized, then there's, there's really nothing to comment on.
The issue, the issue is that, for me, being new to this board, I had no agenda. I had no personal goals. So I asked people, what are your goals for Littleton? And I got forty-one suggestions, some of which I thought were terrific. Personally, I thought terrific and some of them I thought were foolish, but who am I to pass judgment on forty-one suggestions? I didn't excise one of them. I gave all forty-one to Keith and he painstakingly put them in this matrix and I'm sure it was a, a task to do so. But I don't think it's my place to say, well, I'm going to be a champion for this person's cause over this person's cause. I answered to both of those people.
Right, so you can champion for both of them at the same time. You're elected here to make decisions. You are the CEO of town, okay? So you need to be able to make decisions based on what you feel is the best for the town. Now, taking your public input is all well and good, but you as an elected official, as the CEO of this town, needs to make decisions.
I understand what my role is.
So, I mean, that's, you know, just, you need to take those forty-one and champion which ones that you feel are, works best for the town, I guess, you know.
If you feel all forty-one meet, then you, put them all in there.
But we're going from forty-one to you suggesting I pick three and I don't feel that that's appropriate to the other thirty-eight people who came up with suggestions ranging from, you know, economic development to, to vision for our town.
I just made a suggestion, Jenna.
Yeah, why that?
Yeah, I just made a suggestion. That's what it's all about. Just making a suggestion, that's all.
So let's look at it a little differently. What harm does it do to, if somebody says, ooh, that's an interesting subject, I'd like to speak, and they raise their hand, what harm does it do to recognize them?
The harm is, I mean, it's just that it takes, if it, if it doesn't make to the goals, then we've, we've spent the town's time on that. And then when we get to the, the actual public hearing on them, we hear the same things twice and it's just not efficient. And that's, you know, I guess that, that's one of the things I go for. I mean, you know, we're all here very late. I mean, it's, you know, nine-thirty at night, we were scheduled to go much earlier than this. I'm just trying to maintain efficiency and, and, and do the town's business. We're going to hear the town's comments on the board's goals at a open, at a public hearing. That's the purpose of the public hearing. The purpose of a, of reviewing the goals is, is not to hear public hearing necessarily, but it's to get something for the public to comment on.
I would think maybe we can take the way that Keith has lined this whole up with the different, different topics.
You could like ten categories.
Yeah, there's ten categories. Maybe we take public input, when we really talk about some of these topics that are here, we can talk about very quickly, give information on that somebody might already have or how, how something's already being done. But, you know, this, there could be things on, on this list that are, are in the works right now, so maybe that could be pointed out. So maybe we can go through the, each topic a lot quicker, just going down the list. I mean, obviously some of them, I think one, I saw you had, Jen, on the big, said big box, some of that's been taken care of through.
Very good, okay.
And so that'd be the type of thing that when, when that subject come up, someone can say, oh, the plane board just took care of that so many years ago, you can relate that back to whoever did it. And maybe it'll go quicker than we think if we, the, my only fear is we get a one, say we get the one thing and we're only twenty minutes into the topic and we're spending twenty-five minutes on one, we have to go through all of them.
And we get to where we are now. And, you know, and to Mr. Clancy's point, I mean, I, I regret that he can't be here. I mean, maybe there's somebody who can't be here on the, on the twenty-fourth, but who can be here on the eighth.
So you will take comment on the twenty-fourth, is what you're saying?
We're taking, well, I know we will take comment on the, at the public hearing. Whether or not we take comment at the, by the draft meeting, I guess that's up to the, that's up to what the feeling I get from the board, but my inclination is to hold a public hearing to take public comment.
You, you made one comment and this is meant to be derogatory in any way, shape or form, but the, the founding fathers made sure that we would never have an efficient government and they did it for a reason. And they did it just so that we can have debates like this and, and come to the correct choice.
And debates like on July eighth.
Yes, but, but for me, this is, the more we encourage the public to participate in the business we do, the better we perform as a board.
So should we have three public hearings? Because that's going to really encourage some debate. You'll get, you'll, you'll get Mr. Clancy, we have it, we have July eighth and then we have, you know, we, we have it again on July twenty-second so that Mr. Clancy and other people can do it and then, well, you know, some people are away that week, so let's have it in August too. I mean, is that what, you know, that's kind of where you're going with it.
The way I envision it happening, if you allow public input during the development phase, we'll call it the development phase of the goals, is that we're, we are already down to categories that we're working in. Those are predetermined, they've been going on. Keith has done that for us for years. And so, so we're only going to really be taking input in a general categories. I don't think we're going to be taking a lot of input into specific things unless somebody who says, I put that in, this is why I, I think that's important.
Well, that's up to the board members.
But as we work along and work through those things, that input will become more and more focused to where we end up.
Okay. Keith, then?
I have a suggestion for, for the, for the sake of being able to share with the public in a general sense of what the board, where the board may be headed for goal setting. If it's all right with you, if, if even in the announcement of what our next meeting is going to be, if I could list the ten topics, you know, economic development, town services, organizational and fiscal management, so on and so on, at, at least to give some kind of frame of reference for, for what people may want to provide input on.
But those are the same as last year's, Keith?
Right. They are, with the exception, I think the, the one that was added was number ten, vision and community, which was a new one.
That's a new one.
But the others, you know, if we need to, you know, to send a signal of what sorts of things the board is considering, they fall into those categories and, and rather than give an exhaustive list of what we'll be talking about on the twenty-fourth, I mean, if, if you wanted to, I can, you know, I can finish this one and then, and then upload this document.
That is a great idea. I think you should do that.
I would also be willing to move the public hearing to.
And I'll take any edits that anyone wants to have.
I'd be willing to move the public hearing to July twenty-second to Mr. Clancy.
I will not be here for that.
Sold.
I can make it, I can make it all the way, even get there.
But at that time, the twelve, the board will.
You know, so I think we can cut down on hearings and thinking it's going to take four and six and eight and twelve hours if people have the information upfront. If the disclosure of this happens now, maybe people won't come because they'll say, wow, these are all great ideas and I'd be happy if half of them were adopted, so I don't need to go. Or they'll say, this one's really important and I'm going to go for that one. Or Mr. Clancy can write a, a letter saying, I'm not here on the eighth, but please focus on that one. But he can't do that without this document.